Okay, welcome, everybody, to the regular Bellevue City Council December 10th meeting. Before we begin, I'll say a few words about participating in the council meetings. Individuals are not allowed to disrupt the meeting. This includes talking out of turn or without permission, interrupting or making sounds when someone else is talking or approaching council members or city employees who are staffing the meeting. If a person does disrupt the meeting, I will give a warning and the person's remaining comment time or ask the person to leave the room for the rest of the meeting. And my hope is that we can all have a nice, wonderful meeting. We have a lot to celebrate tonight. And so with that...
I can't hear you.
Okay. So with that, we'll ask the clerk to do the roll call.
Mayor Robinson.
That's better, I can hear her.
Here.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Malakutian?
Okay. I'm going to ask both of you to please not interrupt the meeting, and I appreciate that you're not able to hear, and we've heard your thoughts on that, but we'll continue the meeting now. That's a warning for both of you. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Malakutian? Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Yeah.
Councilmember Nguyen-House?
Here.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
And Councilmembers on?
Here.
So we'll start with Councilmember Nguyen-House leading the flag salute.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, okay.
Conversations. Okay, so we have a commendation tonight for the Bellevue Library Advisory Board, and that's going to be read by Councilmember Hamilton, hopefully received by Bellevue Library Board President Kat Pipkin, and spoken to by John Scheller and David Frappier. I hope I said that right. Okay, Councilmember, go ahead.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Whereas in 1993, the Bellevue City Council converted the existing library trustees into the Bellevue Library Advisory Board, solidifying its role as an essential liaison between the city of Bellevue and the King County library system; and whereas the Bellevue Library Advisory Board has served with distinction by providing periodic reports and recommendations to the city council and city manager on the scope and quality of library services available to Bellevue residents, ensuring high standards and accessibility for all; and whereas the board has advised the KCLS Board of Trustees on critical matters, including the acquisition, maintenance, and disposition of Bellevue library facilities, as well as the establishment of rules and regulations governing their use, demonstrating a steadfast commitment to the enhancement of library infrastructure; and whereas the board has supported numerous impactful initiatives, such as summer reading programs, safer pedestrian routes near Bellevue libraries, and strong partnerships with organizations like the Bellevue Friends of the Library and the Newport Way Library Association, further enriching the cultural and educational fabric of the community; and whereas the Bellevue Library Advisory Board has maintained robust communication and a vital connection between the King County library system and the city of Bellevue, fostering collaboration and ensuring the alignment of library services with community needs and values; and whereas the city of Bellevue expresses its heartfelt gratitude to the many dedicated members who have served on the Bellevue Library Advisory Board over the years, honoring their hard work, volunteerism, and unwavering commitment to enhancing library services for future generations. Now, therefore, I, Dave Hamilton, on behalf of Mayor Lynn Robinson, on behalf of the Bellevue City Council, do this 10th day of December in the year 2024, hereby commend Bellevue Library Advisory Board on its remarkable history, achievements, and contributions as it concludes its service as a city board and commends its legacy of fostering learning, connection, and community.
Thank you. So I'm going to invite John and David up from King County Library, and then we will have a picture with all the Library Board members.
Mayor, if I may, Ms. Pipkin did make it to the...
Oh, well, then, Ms. Pip, get up here. We'll start with King County, and then I'll have you speak if you'd like.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson and council members. John Scheller, Government Relations Manager for the King County Library System. I'm here with David Frappier, Regional Manager for the Bellevue Libraries, to express our appreciation to the Library Advisory Board members, past and present. We thank you for your service.
Well, having survived 30 wonderful, long years of service to the city, we want to express our gratitude to the city of Bellevue for fostering community involvement through boards and commissions. Behind me, I have the other Library Advisory Board members. May I introduce them?
Yes.
Kimberly Anderson, Sam Ficero, Sarah Rock, Imran Siddique.
Well, thank you. So if there's anything more to be said? No? Let's have our, all have our picture together. Okay, next, we have the approval of the agenda, but before we do that, we're actually going to move the agenda items around so that we can do the most exciting part first. So do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda amended to move item 12A, Resolution 10461, ahead of item 10 under study sessions.
That's to amend it. Did we move to approve the amended agenda, or that's just to amend? Okay, all those in favor of amending the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor? Or was there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are nine pre-registered speakers this evening, so before I start calling names, I'll go over a few of the rules that the council has in place. So oral communications is for a period of no more than 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to city of Bellevue government. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called. In both of those categories, the presiding officer is authorized to give preference to those who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days, or who will be speaking on items that will come in front of council within the next 60 days. Each speaker is allowed to speak up to three minutes, and only three speakers are allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. So with that, I'll call our first speaker, who is Sally Lawrence.
Hello, Mayor Lynn Robinson and all members of the city council. This is indeed an exciting night, and thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak. I'm here to urge you to approve Resolution Number 10461 to fund the purchase of the Milt Swanson property. Adding this parcel to the existing Coal Creek natural area opens up many wonderful possibilities for the city. It can provide a site where we can teach our schoolchildren and visitors about an important era in the city's past history. It will better protect Coal Creek, a salmon creek. Urban creeks are at risk as with, with temperature change. Stream temperatures may rise, but Coal Creek has an advantage over other urban creeks because its headwaters are protected by the tree canopy already of Cougar Mountain Regional Park. So this makes adding this buffer to Coal Creek a really sound investment because it will additionally protect the creek. So another advantage of adding this parcel is to improve recreational access to both the county park on the east side of Lake Mount Boulevard and the Coal Creek Trail on the west side. Both of them currently have very limited parking. I'd like to thank city council for its positive response to the huge community support that Save Coal Creek has gathered over six years. Besides the nearly 6,000 area residents who signed our petition, Save Coal Creek has also gained important recognition and support from local organizations: Eastside Audubon, Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust, Trout Unlimited, Newcastle Historical Society, The Trust for Public Land, and really important support from county council members Claudia Valducci and Reagan Dunn. I'd like to thank Bellevue Parks Department, which wrote an amazing grant application to King County Conservation Futures Fund and was awarded an astounding $9.2 million in the summer of 2023. Save Coal Creek is grateful to our wonderful supporters and for the hard work of both the Trust for Public Land and Bellevue City staff to bring about successful negotiations with the property owner. And now, city council, please do the right thing and vote yes on the proposed resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Kapler, but I will note that our timer is malfunctioning currently, so we are tracking time here, and I'll let you know when we get to one minute. Is Mr. Kapler here?
I'm David Kapler at 255 Southeast Andrews Street in downtown Issaquah. In 1990, the Issaquah Alps Trails Club proposed and sponsored a five-day march from Snoqualmie Pass to Elliott Bay. The concept of a connected system of parks and trails appealed to other park advocates and government staff, officials, and elected leaders. The march was a great success, but nothing was clear that the Trails Club was weighing over their head, and a new group solely focused on the greenway concept was needed. With a history of great successes dealing with regional issues and a very personal interest in the greenway, Jim Ellis joined with other leaders to form the Mountain to Sound Greenway Trust. Such a group needed funding, staff, and office space. All three needs were initially provided by the Trust for Public Land. In the Smith Tower, where they, where offices were, were staffed there alongside the non-greenway statewide efforts that the trust was engaged in. The proposal for acquisition that you are to consider tonight has come about through the diligent efforts of the Trust for Public Land, working with Bellevue Park staff. Your yes vote tonight will make all of these years of effort a resounding success. Thank you for your support. I'm David Kapler for the Issaquah Alps Trails Club, and I'm wearing my 30-some-year-old shirt that I wore on our five-day march from Snoqualmie Pass to the shores of Puget Sound and surrendered responsibility for getting the greenway going to Jim Ellis and his leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Steve Williams.
I am so pleased that negotiations for the Swanson property have been successful and that you will be voting on the acquisition tonight. If you approve the purchase, it would be a wonderful thing. Future generations will be forever grateful. The Coal Creek watershed will then be protected from top to bottom, nearly seven miles of stream channel with lots of tree canopy to shade it. The wildlife quarter connecting and joining the two parks will then be over 900 feet wider, and the deer, bear, bobcats, and all of the smaller creatures who cross the road there would be here tonight to thank you if they could. Over 6,000 people signed the petition to save this property, and many thousands more in future generations will be thanking you. Your children and grandchildren will be thanking you, and I do hope you'll go out there walking with them. If bus service can be expanded, downtown city people would be able to leave their cubicles, offices, and apartments for a full day in the woods without having to travel for hours or perhaps even needing to own a car. In 1917, over 1,000 people lived and worked at Coal Creek in a bustling industrial town, the largest one on the east side. It will now all be returned to nature, but making it a park presents many exciting possibilities. The open fields on this property offer a special habitat for songbirds and butterflies, different from the adjacent forests. A badly needed parking lot could provide space for school buses and shuttles so that small children, the elderly, and those in wheelchairs could enjoy the level fields and history exhibits and nature classes. The preserved red barn could house 100-year-old tools and mining equipment. Farm equipment could be placed outside or even used to cultivate demonstration crops. A plaza in front of the barn could provide space for outdoor classes with a small coffee and gift shop as a place for tired hikers to relax. The barn will be there to remind all of us that for over 50 years, the 1850s to the 1900s, all Bellevue citizens had to rely on horses and animals every day. How come? Cars hadn't been invented yet or even made it to the west coast.
30 seconds remaining.
A future interpretive center could house photographs and tell all sorts of stories about the 100 years of coal mining, which happened right there under our feet. It spurred the growth of Seattle and was the foundation of towns and community life on the east side. We, in the history groups, do have Milt Swanson's coal car, and we want, first of all, to see that mounted again next to Lake Mount Boulevard to remind all of us about the tremendous amount of hard work that happened here and built our strong Bellevue heritage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Craig Speel, who's joining us online. Mr. Speel, can you hear me?
You can hear me.
We can. Your time begins now.
Good evening. My name is Craig Speel, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of over 150 residents who are members of a coalition focused on enhancing neighborhoods and the livability of Bellevue. Collectively, we support the development of affordable housing, managed growth, and increased density, but not at the cost to diminish the livability of our Bellevue's neighborhoods. Tonight, we are requesting council to not permanently approve the downtown interim LUCA concessions, which expired this past September, and to require an economic analysis before further consideration. While allowing a higher FAR and increased density for areas such as the Spring District and Wilberton may be appropriate, they are not fitting for parcels which are adjacent to single-family housing and residential neighborhoods. Providing these concessions indiscriminately without an economic analysis can be a costly experiment in both absolute dollars and residents' quality of life. Look no further than Pinnacle Development, a three-phase project of over 3,300 units. After council temporarily extended these code changes last April, Pinnacle resubmitted a new application, and unfortunately, parties of record HOA's and neighborhoods were never notified the change, which increased the minimum height 40 percent. If approved, Pinnacle will in effect build a 14- to 17-story wall flanked by 26 towers running an entire length of the city blocks. Such proximity to residential neighborhoods will have a considerable impact, diminishing homeowner's privacy, sunlight, while increasing glare and heat all summer. It is concerted with the revised FAR, Pinnacle's plans do not include any children's play areas, green space, or off-dog leash areas. Further, by reducing parking requirements, Pinnacle and its residents will create spillover traffic and parking conflicts in joining neighborhoods. If the LUCA changes are made permanent, council will be telegraphing that the city has abandoned the wedding cake model, and, most importantly, its commitment to its neighborhoods. This shift will be disheartening to the community who trusted past council's commitment to protect Bellevue's great neighborhoods.
One minute remaining.
Pinnacle is a clear example of how these code changes are a gift to developers' profitability, offering few, if any, public benefits while forever harming our neighborhoods. In summary, the coalition is asked in two simple requests. Vote, one, vote to not renew the interim LUCA concessions and direct staff to revise proposals submitted, supported upon economic analysis, to be in harmony with the northwest Bellevue comp plan and without adversely impacting neighborhoods. Two, direct city staff and the city attorney to take steps to disallow Pinnacle's proposed changes, citing the lack of public benefit, direct harm to neighborhoods, impact to infrastructure, along with some significant and concerning irregularities in the application and accuracy of the information submitted. Thank you very much, and we look forward to your support. Good day.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Heidi Dean.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. Looking over the FAR Phase 2 documents, I guess I need some clarification. Is the city using references to Kelsey Creek Center and Crossroads Mall, which are both large commercial properties situated on major arterials with frequent transit in the same breadth as small neighborhood centers like Newport Hills Shopping Center? Let's not forget that the Crossroads is designated as a county-wide center for the aforementioned reasons. So I guess, well, I can, you know, you can wish that five to seven stories of high-density housing at a small neighborhood center isn't insane. One cannot wish away the two-lane road grid that encompasses small neighborhood centers such as Newport. And without a sound transit level of public taking, there's no way to expand the road grid for Newport, not just for shopping center redevelopment, but also to handle the current overflow that's using Newport Hills to bypass congestion on I-405 and Coal Creek Parkway, and it gets worse every year. One key item that the council should consider is if the goal is, quote, "creating diverse housing opportunities citywide, expanding affordable housing, fostering vibrant, well-served neighborhoods, and enabling residents to live closer to work and shopping," end quote, then building out the small neighborhood centers with high-density residential would completely defeat this goal by removing services that are currently available and the potential for expanded services in retail. It would force more travel away from the neighborhoods, which violates the transportation and neighborhoods elements of the newly adopted comp plan. The 2023 retail analysis compared the viability of the Newport Hills Shopping Center to the viability of large existing and planned mixed-use centers around the city. Does nobody recognize the, how odd that is, that apples and oranges comparison? But more later regarding the really interesting misinformation that's actually in that analysis.
One minute remaining.
While I recognize that the work to update the code is just beginning, I do think it's important for the city to acknowledge that the plan for implementation of FAR Phase 2 will pretty much remove the neighborhood from neighborhood planning. I asked the NAP team to address for attendees of my recent community club meeting how this particular agenda item would impact the Newport NAP process, and they denied that it would. So tonight's study session demonstrates that what staff told my neighbors was untrue. Newport Hills and other small neighborhood centers are not the same as Crossroads and Kelsey Creek, and we'd really appreciate if we were not treated as if we are. And I thank you that, for that. And I did want to give a shout out to our Public Works Department, because you know I'm a streets maintenance mom, and I saw firsthand what all those folks did for the city during that bomb cyclone. They were top-notch, so thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Nicole Myers.
Hello, Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. The Homa agenda on tonight's, the Homa item on tonight's agenda envisions a variety of changes, from five- to seven-story buildings and neighborhood centers, unspecified density increases in the downtown area, other form standard changes such as lock coverage, residential parking, setbacks, setbacks, ground floor uses, and play area requirements, and these things are still to be determined. The agenda memo does say that Wilberton, Belaret, and East Main are getting other zoning updates and wouldn't be included in the floor area ratio change, but the map of affected areas has a big chunk of Wilberton, so that portion may have changes to the form standards. It's not entirely clear or easy for a member of the public to understand what's being discussed tonight, and I hope you'll help clarify that. It also applies to other neighborhood centers where, as Heidi mentioned, zoning options have been recently discussed by the planning commission in the comp plan update process. In some cases, these have neighborhood plan updates in progress, and it's interesting to see how this might overlap. I also noticed that much of the map is focused along freeways, despite our goals of the new comprehensive plan to avoid citing sensitive uses like housing in places where we can assume there is poor air quality. All these new buildings will have 40 percent more noise in their bedrooms than existing apartments were allowed to be built with as a result of recent changes to the noise control code. In addition, Pinnacle South is an example of how the FAR increase in particular can produce a very claustrophobic development with hardly any greenery. It's supposed to have about 5 percent permeable soil. When I look at the proposed design, it really doesn't look like there's enough space for the residents to socialize and enjoy the outdoors outside their own individual apartments, and I really feel that it may create a loneliness and isolation, a sense of isolation for those future residents. Units will be a tight squeeze for families. Average unit size is under 800 square feet.
One minute remaining.
So many people will want pets, but they have no place to walk a dog except in front of other people's apartments and homes. And I know this Homa effort is intended to increase residential FAR, just as the IOC did. Looking back at the IOC, the incentives for affordable housing in the IOC gave Pinnacle South a four-to-one bonus for the originally planned 72 units of affordable housing and a four-to-one bonus for the new 30 units of affordable housing, effectively a 13.6 bonus if you only think about the change in affordable housing. If just the FAR is considered, the many incentive program value of $28 per credit and average affordable unit size of 710 square feet means the city is subsidizing each of those units to the tune of $270,000, even before you consider the height bonuses, the step-back changes, the other possible tax exemptions that the developers may be eligible for. It's, there are so many existing supports for affordable housing, I don't think we can possibly justify this amount.
Ms. Myers.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Sue Mercer.
Glad to be home from Africa and glad to live in Bellevue. I particularly appreciate our traffic, although I have some improvements to suggest. It's certainly better than the traffic in Nairobi. Tanzania has a good government. Kenya has a terrible government, and they live right next door to each other. Anyway, I have three topics: traffic, mental health, and I would like Bellevue to adopt Nairobi as a sister city. Regarding traffic issues, there are still potholes on Southeast 16th between 156th and 148th, and there are still manhole covers that aren't flush with the street on Southeast So I had hoped by the time I got home, those issues would have been taken care of, but I'm just bringing them to your attention again. Also, at 5 o'clock in the morning, I... Also, at five o'clock in the morning, I can get from Southeast Twenty-second to Northeast Twenty-fourth quite quickly. But the other day, I was trying to get in that general area, and the traffic made it impossible. So I was very disappointed to see how bad the traffic is at rush hour now. Some of that has to do with the divider in one-hundred-and-forty-eighth Street where the left turn lane, you need to get rid of the nice, beautiful divider and make the left turn lane longer. Also...
One minute remaining.
I want to ask the question again. How are we making sure that the money that we put into mental health is being spent well? Are there enough beds? Are there enough recovery, addiction recovery beds? And those, I think, were my three topics.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Joe Kunsler, who's joining us virtually. Mr. Kunsler, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Your time begins now.
Why, thank you, ma'am. Joe Kunsler here. I know I've emailed some of you on council, not all of you, about this, but I really wish you were at a certain competency hearing last Friday, and since you weren't, I'm going to tell you about my experience. I got off the bus, I walked to King County District Court, and who do I find pulling in the parking lot on a suspended driver's license? Everybody's favorite little Nazi, Alex Zimmerman. I then attempted to access some of the court records at a district court. I couldn't even get the files to come up. I then sat quietly watching proceedings, and the court doesn't have the resources to provide a mental competency evaluation within ninety days, so Mr. Zimmerman's situation's been stretched a netter ninety. Sorry. I get all up in my throat when I talk about this bully these days. I really found it very disappointing that it fell to me to advise the court in writing about Zimmerman's conduct towards you and towards other local governments. I would strongly urge you to talk to your city prosecutor about making the court well aware, as well as DSHS. There is also an attempt by Mr. Zimmerman to try to fire his court-appointed attorney, which is waiting until his competency hearing to be over. I would highly stress to you that you noticed Mr. Zimmerman is driving not just on suspended license, but in a twenty-tenths Mercedes.
One minute remaining.
Okay, thank you. In that minute, I'd like to advise the council that I feel it is in the best interest of Mayor Ren Robinson's health that Jared Newenhouse take over as mayor for 2025 and get after Mr. Zimmerman and get him expelled. We've all had enough of his hate speech. It's disgusting, and it's beneath you. You all deserve better than this. And I think Mayor Robinson has put up a back level of glorious fight, but it's time for someone fresh to be in the battle. Thank you for taking my comments. You all have my email.
The final speaker on our pre-registered list is Mr. Zimmerman.
Oh, is me?
Alex Zimmerman, yes.
Surprise, little bit. Okay. Typical Bellevue governor. Where is timer? I don't see my three minutes. Where is this?
We're tracking time over here. You have two fifty-three left.
But there, where is timer? Where is my time? I don't show, you don't show this. It's supposed to be here in screen. What's going on? The hell, my lovely, dirty, damn Nazi, anti-semitic fascist pig. My name, Alex Zimmerman, a president of Stand Up America, MAGA member, a candidate for Bellevue Council. I want to speak about something which is absolutely critical right now. Where is, where is Consul, Deputy Consul Mohammed? He come back to Iran for kill Jew? I never see him for one month. What's going on? Okay, it's not about this. I want to speak about Bellevue Police Department, which I have huge experience in for last six years under Mayor Robinson controlling us, how absolutely aggressive, acting like a real freaking Gestapo, you know what it means? We have very unique situation. I explained to you my experience for last six years under your Robinson controlling. We have a Bellevue Police Commission, you know what it means? What is have meeting four times per year, very unique. And you cannot ever present in this meeting, so by definition, it's an idiotic situation.
Mr. Zimmerman, this has nothing to do with the Bellevue City Council, okay? So can you stick to things that actually have to do with the Bellevue City Council?
Stop interrupting me, because I always play stupid for interruption. Bellevue Police is a part of government. My friend, it's a part of government? Are you sure? Gestapo not a part of government? KGB too, but...
I'm just asking you to speak to Bellevue of the Bellevue City Council.
No, I want to speak about Police Department because it's absolutely critical. It is exactly important, because the Bellevue Police terrorized me for last year. It's a nightmare, but as I never see before. So Commission have only four times per year. Seattle Commission have meeting every month. People can present, and I present dozen time. And this Seattle Commission, under US Supreme Court control for twelve years, we have a Gestapo here, what is total out control. We cannot ever present in this meeting. It's a nightmare. How is this possible?
Avram, you're talking about other things that have nothing to do with the Bellevue City Council. This is your second warning.
Police Department very critical for hundred fifty thousand people.
If you don't bring it to the council venue, we're going to ask you to leave.
Bellevue Police Department is a part of government. You have dirty government to the bones. My President Trump talked about this many times. Clean government totally.
I'm going to ask that Mr. Zimmerman be escorted out.
I don't understand. A police department is not a government? I'm confused. Why she interrupt me? Is she mentally sick? I knows it. Why she interrupt me?
Okay, Avram, it's time to go. Thank you.
What is mean I done? So Police Department is not a government?
Mr. Zimmerman, your time has expired.
So Police Department is not a government?
Next on our agenda, we have the report from our city manager.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council members, this first item is an informational update on our city's Bellevue Essentials Program. And I would like to welcome Julie Ellenhorn and two resident participants in the program, Cavi Mather and Elaine Richly, to the table. They are joined by the incomparable Julie Ellenhorn, our Community Relations Coordinator in Community Development. And I would like to take a moment just to thank Julie for the critical role that she's played in not only creating the Essentials Program, but also leading it with excellence over twelve years. Julie has plans to retire this coming year, and so I want Julie to know how much we all appreciate the amazing amount of work that she's put into this and how grateful we are for the profound impact she's had in helping to create many leaders for this community. So with that, I'll turn it over to Julie.
Thank you. Pleased to be here. Good evening, Mayor Robinson and Council members. As you know, each year I have the honor of speaking to you about Bellevue Essentials, our city civic engagement program now in its twelfth year. And tonight, I'm here to share some of the highlights of our 2024 class of thirty-three graduates. First, I want to thank the city council for your ongoing dedication and all your support to this program. And I'm also deeply grateful to the dozens of city staff who make Bellevue Essentials possible each year, who come and teach each year. Tonight's presentation is for information only, and no action is needed. I want to tell you a little bit about the class of 2024. Sorry, next slide. Yeah, there. Tell you a little bit about the class of 2024. Each class is selected by an alumni committee that strives to create a cohort that's varied in age, represents all of our neighborhood areas, and is diverse in background and experiences. So this year's class is from fifteen neighborhood areas. Sixty percent of this class was born outside the US, which is really reflective of what our city is. And over a third of the group is very new to Bellevue, having lived here less than four years. They're one of the youngest classes we've ever had to date, with fifty percent of the class under age forty-four. So our program is really designed to provide new leadership for the city, bring in a younger cohort, and for the future. So they are a really cohesive and spirited group. In addition to twelve weeks of intense classroom and interactive activities, they spontaneously jumped up on stage during Welcome Week, they ventured out to carnation on a rainy Friday night for a class party, and some of the ladies got together at Bellevue's newest hot spot, Lamar, downtown Bellevue, and a guys' night, it resonates. So not only did they want to learn a lot, they wanted to get to know each other and be connected outside of their class. And I'm certain that their relationships will continue past their graduation this week. So they came together each week to learn about government process, operations, policy, decision-making, and to get comfortable interacting with staff and leadership. And they learned, they explored, they asked lots of questions, did many simulations, prioritization exercises, learning about city needs and decision-making. And now they are part of a network of engaged and knowledgeable individuals who are available to serve our city and the broader community and are great ambassadors for the city. Excellent. In addition to presentations from most of our city departments, financial support from Amazon made it possible for this class to enjoy two day-long bus tours highlighting neighborhood character and city parks and community services. And Amazon will also be sponsoring our class graduation on Thursday evening, and I hope that you will all join us there. So some of our, sorry, let's go back. Some of our class highlights included site visits to the Botanical Garden and the South Bellevue Community Center, a tour of the Belred Arts District, and a utility session at the Bellevue Service Center. So I know you have all come to know our doodle biz drawings. Every year, we create a graphic that's inspired by the creativity and the vision of the current class. And you can see that this year's illustration, our theme was discovering Bellevue through Bellevue Essentials. And we're excited to see this fun drawing, and I think it really reflects the learning and the discovery of this group the last twelve weeks. So with the addition of our 2024 graduates, Bellevue Essentials now numbers four hundred and seven alumni. Dozens of them serve in their neighborhoods and with community organizations. Over eighty board and commission members have served over the past twelve years, with thirty-seven currently serving now. We have three alumni who serve as council members, Council Member Newenhouse, Council Member Malakutian, and we have a Kirkland Council member who relocated after the learning he did here and was able to go serve in Kirkland as well. And our staff has been instrumental in launching civic engagement programs in other cities, helping to keep not only Bellevue strong, but to help around the region. So tonight, before I introduce our two speakers, who are really going to tell you about the impact of this program, I do want to recognize all the class members in attendance tonight, and I just want the current class members to stand up so you can see who they are and how many of them have come out tonight. Wow. And then I want the alumni to stand up, because there's a bunch of them out there too. So you can see, we have a very active and engaged group, not only from this year, but from past years as well. So I want to introduce our speakers tonight. We have Cavi Mather, an eighteen-month resident of downtown Bellevue, and Elaine Richly, a twenty-five-year resident of both Woodridge and Westlake Semiamish. And I think they come from really different and unique perspectives because of how long they've been here and where they live, and I think they're going to each share their story with you. So I'm going to turn it over to Cavi.
First, I want to thank the council for hearing us out and for your continued support for the Bellevue Essentials Program. I've lived in Bellevue since spring of 2023, moving up here from Irvine, California, to live closer to my girlfriend and to continue my journey in the tech industry. However, I've always found it inspirational to see how cities can give back to the residents that live there rather than just being places of work. I came into this program with that drive to learn more about local government structure, challenges, and how we, as residents, can get more involved. What I got from the city's program has been so much more. I was proud to have been part of a multi-generational cohort full of unique and varying perspectives, half of whom were not born in the United States. This included new residents like me, seasoned residents, and even high school students wanting to learn more about where they live. I had the chance to take a deep dive into current issues the city is managing, as well as its rich history. I found myself wanting to tell my friends and family about the city's history of Japanese farmers in the early twentieth century, the work to remove the racist language of restrictive covenants that used to prevent people like me from owning a house, and how downtown has been shifting from a car-centric area to a pedestrian, biking, and public transit-friendly one. Bellevue Essentials also gave us real-world opportunities to visit city departments and landmarks, where we could talk directly to city employees and learn about why they enjoy giving back. One notable day was our trip to the South Bellevue Community Center. Dave Glenn, who managed the center, showcased the affordable gym, sports programs, and amazing staff trained to serve anyone and everyone. Another, sorry, another class that sticks out for me was presented by the Homelessness Outreach Department. I greatly appreciated their empathy towards unhoused people and how they focus on provide resources and support before enforcement. Their class activity also provided a demonstration of how complicated the process to obtain support can be if an unhoused person does not have documentation. It was a reminder of the privilege I have as a resident and citizen with housing, and I am glad that the department and other facilities, such as Mini City Hall, can provide a helping hand to others. Overall, Bellevue Essentials was crucial for keeping me informed about my community while also inspiring me to pursue a potential career pivot into the public sector. I've come out of it truly feeling like I'm not alone in my love for community building, public transportation, and affordable housing, based on the other residents I met in the program. The cherry on top was seeing the high school students in the program actively engage with our course. I wish I had a program like this growing up to check out. Aside from being a window into local government, Bellevue Essentials provides a unique opportunity for residents of multiple generations to discuss their perspectives and bridge gaps in an increasingly divided world. Thank you for your time.
I've so appreciated the last twelve weeks of my time with the Bellevue Essentials Program. It's taught me so much about city government in general and about the amazingly well-run city of Bellevue specifically. First, a brief background. While I think I have a natural inclination and habit of trying to pitch in where I can to help others out, it's become more difficult for me in recent years to feel hopeful with the deep political divisions around us. The sheer enormity of some problems can seem overwhelming to me. Then, in a moment of feeling especially frustrated by the size of the world's problems, I watched a documentary that included several interviews with individuals around the globe who were taking steps in the places they lived to make a difference. For example, in Sierra Leone, a very poor young man tried to impact the dark black cloud of air pollution that hung over his city by scavenging from a junkyard all the parts he needed to successfully build a solar-powered car to offer an alternative to combustion-engine car exhaust. Or in Vietnam, a housewife with no education and no financing experimented on her own and came up with a way to turn piles of garbage regularly left on the street into cleaning products that could be made and sold by other villagers to give them an income and to help manage their garbage problem. These examples and many more reminded me of the powerful importance of moving past feelings of hopelessness in the face of challenges, to do what you can with what you have where you are. Then, after I spent a year volunteering at Bellevue's Conflict Resolution Center and being reminded while there of the value of making a small difference, one interaction at a time, I learned of Bellevue Essentials. And now, after these last twelve weeks, I would say I've received three great gifts. One, the opportunity to come to know other people who are similarly interested in working to make a positive difference and who understand that every step forward, no matter how big or small, is still a step forward. Two, an understanding of all that I didn't know I didn't know about the moving parts of a city and what it takes to make a city not just tick, but to... of a city and what it takes to make a city not just tick but to operate smoothly. I was surprised and impressed more than once as I learned what goes on behind the scenes. And three, a profound appreciation for all of the city employees we met, who shared a common focused effort to improve our city for the better. The employees we met across the board seemed knowledgeable, committed, and focused on doing what they could to make improvements and to increase efficiencies. So the city of Bellevue has made it exceptionally easy for me to do what I can with what I have where I am in my chosen home, where we already have so much. And I welcome all of the opportunities to make Bellevue a little bit better, especially here with such an impressive team of people, so many resources, and so much potential for the future. It would be crazy not to offer a helping hand. Thank you for supporting this amazing program. It was inspiring.
Thank you, Kavi and Elaine, for sharing your stories. And as City Manager Carlson mentioned, this is my last season with Bellevue Essentials, and it's been an honor and a privilege to develop and oversee this program for twelve years. I've really enjoyed playing a part in developing civic leadership here and look forward. I live down the street, so I'm not going anywhere, and I look forward to seeing what comes next. And I hope to see all of you at graduation on Thursday evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I'll just say, if the Bellevue Essentials class can stay until our next agenda item, it would be fun to have you here, if you can. Okay, go ahead. I know you have another item, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have one more. This is a brief highlight for the Transportation, Maintenance, and Operations Staff. They're going to be talking a little bit about their work to prepare for another winter season. And from the Transportation Department, I would like to welcome Chris Long, Assistant Director for Mobility Operations, and introduce Adam Weir, our Street Maintenance Superintendent. I believe this might be Adam's first presentation to the council. And they will focus on the expectations for the winter season as well as a few innovations that they may or may not get to use depending on the weather. And I'll hand it over to Chris. They'll also talk a little bit about the recent winter storm. So take it away, Chris.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson, Mayor Robinson, and Deputy Mayor Malakutian for having us here again today. I enjoy coming every year to share the hard work that our staff puts in to prepare for winter weather. And this year, I'm joined by Adam, who can get into some of those details from firsthand experience. First thing I want to share is we always have to go over the forecast, and this year is a change from last year. Last year was an El Nino weather pattern, which typically means the weather comes off the Pacific, jet stream heads more into California, which is exactly what the forecast did. California got hammered with snow. We didn't get any in Bellevue. And so that was good for our staff that didn't have to do that overtime work. But this year is La Niña, and so it is already living up to its reputation. It, one of the, one of the characteristics of La Niña is the weather pattern can create small wind events, and we got to see that firsthand two weeks ago. So, but one thing I do want to note, as always, we work hard to be winter weather-ready by November first, and thank goodness, we hit that mark this year because we needed it come the time of the windstorm. So when we talk about becoming winter weather-ready, it really is rallying a team across five different departments to get ready for these winter storm events. Transportation takes the lead in snow and ice events. Utilities takes the lead for flood events, but all five departments work together in all of these events. For a winter storm event, it takes sixty staff working in two shifts, twenty-four hours, to run an event, and in streets, we have twenty-seven. So we rely heavily on other departments to help supplement staff, provide our communications, make sure all our vehicles are running. So it's a big part is the one-city team approach. And last year, I think I mentioned, we had Bellevue TV come out and record the whole training event, and that paid huge dividends. We've had a lot of new staff come onboard, and we were able to get them trained mid-winter last year and be ready for this season. So Adam is going to take it from here.
So for decades, we've relied on those binders that you see in the slide, and next year, we're looking at incorporating a digital mapping apparatus. Think push to turn, so driving around, plow operators won't be tasked with looking at these books, challenging with staff turnover. You have new folks don't necessarily know Bellevue all the time. So this incorporation will make us leaner, more efficient, and ready to be more, I guess, prepared. So each truck outfitted with an iPad will provide those turn-by-turn instructions, and that's starting in 2025, so we expect to have those online for next year. And then we currently, last winter, we didn't have the snow, as Chris mentioned, but we did have icing concerns, and you've seen that recently. When there are icing concerns or forecasts, the Bellevue Streets Maintenance Team comes in and will apply liquid de-icer. If you look at the 405 crossings right here, we will apply to bridge decks. On average, they're five degrees colder because there's no earth beneath them. So there are other areas that we de-ice as well, but the team comes in around 2:00 a.m. and works to about 6:00, 7:00 a.m. morning rush hour to apply that liquid de-icer in the trouble spots identified. We use a nine-hundred-gallon tank and a four-hundred-and-fifty-gallon tank to get into the weeds, and that we refill multiple times. Here, we're looking at the winter weather response map that we tested in 2022 and released as a beta. And what that allows is the residents to see color-coordinated the service level that's been provided actively in a storm. Last year, we didn't get to continue it because we didn't have the response, but as you see there, residents can log on and see last time that a plow has drove, at least serviced the arterial near them. The wind event. Yeah, shoot, I thought that was you. Sorry. So the wind event was a big one. Most of our staff, including myself, we hadn't experienced, 2006 was before I was here with the city, and that was the Hanukkah Eve storm is how it was referred to, at least when talking to me by other colleagues about what took place then, and this is the closest thing since that. So what we did, we showed up duty to report and did our best to meet the expectations of the Transportation Department and really leading from the top, that's Andrew Singalakis, down to Mark Poe, Deputy Director and Assistant Director, Chris Long. They all set the pace and kind of let us know what the expectation is. We prepared as a team to then meet that by setting up the operations center and dispatch, similar to a snow and ice event, in that it was twelve-and-a-half-hour shift, twenty-four hours a day, and then different that the weather can't save you. So if it warms up during a snow and ice event, Mother Nature's come to the rescue, the snow is melting away, this, the damage and destruction is everywhere, and the responsibility is the team to continue after it. So while we've made a lot of progress, Puget Sound Energy also deserves a shout-out because they can't, our team can't manage stuff that's in power lines. It's important for folks to know and for residents as well to be aware, to stay away from stuff in power lines. But real credit to the team and to the city for supporting the team and the leadership level, so.
So the, lastly here, I just wanted to provide a slide with some of the great feedback we received. We, our team was, as Adam mentioned, was out on the streets before the wind hit and quickly, about seven o'clock that night, had to retreat, get out of the wind, and then get back on the street as soon as the wind ended, and continued to work straight for seven straight days doing those twelve-hour shifts. But we will be continuing to do cleanup probably through early January. So we're just gradually working through the neighborhoods and getting the remaining debris. But the residents have been super supportive of our team. We've had people come up and thank them in the field and provided a lot of great comments to the information that our public, our public information officers were sharing out through Twitter and Facebook. And so we thank them for really helping support our outreach and helping get residents educated on what was safe and what to do in these events. So thank you again for this opportunity, and like we always say, we hope there's no snow, but if there is, we'll be ready. So thank you.
Okay, Mayor? That's the end of the City Manager's Report.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this is where we moved our Agenda Item 12A. So that is our Resolution 10461, and I'll let our City Manager introduce it.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Deputy Mayor. This is an exciting resolution before the council tonight, and we are seeking council action. This resolution would authorize the acquisition of the property in the Coal Creek Lake Mott Neighborhood for open space conservation and a possible future trail development. It's been a property of interest for conservation for years due to its strategic location, and I want to recognize Cameron Parker from our Parks and Community Services Department and our Director Michael Shiasaki for their success in applying for and seeking and receiving partnership from King County and also for their work with the property owner to be able to bring this proposal to you tonight. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Michael.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the City Council. And I just have to tell you how excited we are to be here this evening to bring forward this agenda item, and that is, as you just heard from the City Manager, to consider adoption of Resolution 10461, authorizing execution of all the documents necessary for the acquisition of property in the Coal Creek Lake Mott Neighborhood in an amount not to exceed nineteen point one million dollars plus related closing costs. So the 12.2-acre site is located at 7219 and 7331 Lake Mott Boulevard Southeast. The city's Coal Creek Natural Area is to the southwest and north of the site, and just across Lake Mott Boulevard is the county's, King County Regional Wildland Park. And big kudos to the county. The county has been a key partner in moving this acquisition forward, as both a funding partner, as you heard about, with Conservation Futures Grants, and the county's expressed support of the property acquisition. But before I hand this off to Cameron Parker for some additional details, special thanks to staff, both Cameron, Assistant Director, and also Kim Bowie, our Acquisition Manager. And she really did a lot of the heavy lifting here. And also, from the Trust for Public Land, our partner in this is Lori Benson, and I know she is in the audience this evening. So a big shout-out to the team that made this happen. So with that, I will turn this over to you, Cameron, and we'll wrap this up.
All right, thank you. Yeah, just a few points around the acquisition and kind of the thought process that went into it. Evident tonight certainly is the strong amount of local and regional support for adding this to Bellevue's park system. We know that while the site is located down in the southeast corner, Bellevue residents will surely drive down to enjoy and use this space for generations to come. We know this because in our surveying of Bellevue residents that we do routinely, the trail and open space system is by far the most used part of our, of our park system. Eighty percent of Bellevue residents use trails in the course of a year, and many use trails, frequently over fifty percent of Bellevue residents use trails at least on a monthly basis. I think probably tonight, we've pulled a lot of people here who use trails daily. That's my guess behind me. But so we know in the future, this will definitely be an active place for Bellevue residents as well as regional residents as well, who take advantage of both the Coal Creek Trails and Cougar Mountain as well. There are added opportunities here for ecological conservation and restoration within the twelve acres, certainly opportunities for adding tree canopy and improving the habitat conditions here at the site, and has been mentioned as well. The opportunities we have to enhance and use this space to tell more of the story about this unique corner of Bellevue and the history interpretation opportunities we have as well. So with that, we'll go back to the action slide and turn it back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
I'm so excited. I don't know what to do here. So let's go ahead and open it up for discussion or comment, and I want to start with Councilmember Hamilton.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Michael and Cameron. Of course, thrilled to be here to vote on the acquisition of the Milt Swanson property in South Bellevue. Ultimately, what we're doing with this acquisition is the realization of the dream that Milt Swanson had for this property. It's as if we're opening a time capsule that holds a part of the history of our region and our city and the life that Milt and thousands of others lived in the south end of our city. We are protecting a substantial parcel of land that enhances and supports the Coal Creek Natural Area, certainly a big win for the environment and the animals that rely on this critical area to survive. This is also a tremendous win for all of us who take the phrase "a city and a park" to heart. Big thank you to Milt and his vision. Big thank you to the Save Coal Creek Group, who championed the cause. As mentioned earlier, thank you to King County and Councilmembers Claudia Balducci and Reagan Dunn for their efforts in helping us with the grant that covers nearly half of the acquisition. And a big thank you to you, Michael and Cameron, for your efforts with this acquisition and for your ongoing efforts to help shepherd our acquisitions over the long time it takes to get them done. So this is great news, and certainly it's going to be a big yes for me on this one.
Great. Councilmember Stokes?
Yes, thank you very much, and Dave gave a very, very good review of what we've been doing on this. And I've been working on this for some time and is very glad and worked with Dave on the Parks Board, and we've been talking about this for a long time, all of us have been. And the opportunities don't always come up very often, and we just jumped on that opportunity, which we'd been jumping on for a long time, but this was the real deal. And it was so exciting to work with the staff and other people in the city and the council here and looking at this and say, this we have to do because this is a tremendous opportunity, and it's going to be something that will go on for decades, and it's a great contribution we're all making, all of us together. And so I'm just very excited about this and looking forward to going out there and have picnics. And we're going to do it, what, in two or three years maybe, somewhere along the way? Anyhow, it is fantastic, and the community has been so supportive of this, and that's what makes it really important and makes it go. So this is something, again, that we all together, the council, the staff, and the community, have all gotten together and said, let's do this because this is the right thing and the best thing for Bellevue and our consistency, and something that we're going to look at is a great thing to do for a long time, and it's going to be a lot of fun, and maybe some of us get out there and get a little recreation on it too, as well as hiking and all that. So it's just amazing we've done this, and it's one of these things that you look at and say, wow, did we really do this? Yes, we have.
Very good. Right, Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's a big yes for me as well. This is, this is amazing that we've gotten to this point and have done it so quickly. It feels like just yesterday, when Sally Lawrence called me and invited me to go on a walk with her and some other folks from Save Coal Creek and show the, you know, the different parts of the property and educate me about Milt's vision and the importance of saving this property for future generations of residents that live in our city. So this is a big moment, and I want to really thank, a lot of these same folks have been mentioned, but you're going to get accolades from all of us. But Michael, Cameron, thank you so much for all your hard work on this. It's just amazing. I also want to thank Councilmember Dunn and Balducci for their work. I don't think we could do this without the great partnership we have with King County to make this happen and the Land Trust and the great leadership of the City Manager's Office. And again, though, I got to go back to the residents. They're the ones who alerted us to this, advocated to this, organized, and really championed this whole effort. So the accolades, first and foremost, are on their shoulders. What I do want to say, one note, is that for those parts of the city that might be experiencing a bit of a park desert or don't have as equal access or equitable access to green space or parks, this acquisition does not prevent us from this acquisition does not prevent us from making future park acquisitions. This is a big investment, but we still have, as Michael has assured all of us, that we still have capacity for additional park acquisitions going forward. So you are not forgotten if you are in one of those parts of the city that, again, does not have access to the park that you deserve. It is still very much a priority of this council. But having said that, I'm thrilled that we're at this stage. It's a big yes and look forward to passing this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers.
Yes, I echo my colleagues in thanking you, Michael, Cameron, Kim, for bringing this to fruition. You know, when I think about six years of the Milt Swanson property and the persistence in these six years to continue to reach out, knocking on that door, and finally, we broke through and were able to get to an agreement that fits in with what we can do, you know, as a regular hiker across the street there. The fact that this space will be able to be preserved is amazing because when I think about the new parks that we're trying to create in all of the areas, as Councilmember Newton-House talks about, of building new parks, I think about this as a both and, that we can both build new parks in those areas that don't have very many parks, including my neighborhood and areas that I walk to, as well as this space, which is so special because if there was development here, we would never be able to bring anything like this back. So preserving this for eternity is just amazing. The fact that King County came through with the Conservation Futures money as a partner to us, that is also amazing. And I also appreciate the fact that you also talked about the fact that, you know, we're making a commitment of up to $9 million, but we're going to continue to do that outreach to look at getting additional grant funding so that from Bellevue's standpoint, we are making this initial investment, and hopefully we'll be able to bring some more partners along to reduce the city's cost so that we actually have more funds to fund other things. So I think that that is also really, really important. And I would just say that from the Save Coal Creek, Sally, thank you so much. Steve, I remember sitting down and learning from you at Lewis Creek when you were talking about Milt and a lot of the artifacts from his time. And I hope that we will continue to partner with Save Coal Creek from the standpoint of being able to provide programs and walking around and poking around the property and really learning from you. And let's party, let's vote and party.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Bellevue is an amazing place. We are very blessed to live in Bellevue. It's amazing because of people like you, people like us who live here. We provide the legacy for doing the right thing, doing good time and bad time, sick times, in time. We continue to uphold our vision to do what is right. And throughout the years, we've been buying, purchasing a lot of properties. The Maiden Bow Bay, you know, we have been acquiring parcel by parcel. And the Lake Mammoth, we've been buying pieces. And the whole city, we have many, many acquisitions. And Sound Mountain Greenway, as David Kapler talked about, Jim Ellis, he has the support of the public. It's the people, it's the regular people, people who live here who value the right things. They got together, they persist, and they made the right thing happen. These are the people that, like you, you know, so many names have been mentioned. I mean, we can keep on going, but I believe that we need to look at what it values, what the legacy we stand, what will stand here in place thousand years from now, not just today. And if you look back, there are a lot of things that happened, but we need to continue to do that. You know, we just don't spend the money, just do it at a good time, a bad time. This is a pretty tough time. We just did our budget, and we know that the revenue is pretty much standing still. Economy's not that great. We just recovered from COVID. But we know how to spend the money right. We know what is important to us. And I think we have worked hard at it, starting from Sally Lawrence and a lot of you. And you just come to us and you persisted, and our staff is wonderful. They are very positive. They look at it, they look at the possibilities, and we didn't back off. There's a lot of opportunity we can back off, but we don't. That's important. So because of all that, we have been able to do the right things, acquire the right properties, make sure the right investments made, and the legacy can be passed on to the future. So I'm really glad that this is an action that we are taking, and we are not backing off. We are continuing to do so. And there will be opportunities in the future, there'll be more projects in the future, and we don't know what they are. They could be big and small, whatever value they may be. But if it's the right thing to do, if we stay on the track, if we persist, we will make it happen. So thank to all of us, all of you, and continue to pass the legacy down to our future. So we're very happy to make this happen.
Great.
Thank you for all doing that.
Okay, and Deputy Mayor Malakutian?
Mayor, I also want to thank the staff for their amazing work in pursuing this amazing opportunity for saving that piece of land. Huge shout out to King County for their investing in this. Save Coal Creek of our group also, and every other community members who has supported this. But the kudos goes to also the staff to secure the grant, but also negotiating a purchase price below the appraised value, and that demonstrate our excellent stewardship of public resources. This purchase aligns well with our city's conservation goals and comprehensive plan policies to create connected green corridors throughout Bellevue and having been a city in the parks. So I am as excited as all of you who are sitting there. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to make a couple of comments. We're going to take a vote, and I'm going to invite everybody who loves Coal Creek's new property to take a picture with all of us, okay? So this is just a tremendous investment in Bellevue's future. I am so honored to be on the council when we're doing something like this. This is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity these days. And as the old adage says, in real estate, impatience can lead to mistakes. This, we had to have a lot of patience with this. I was looking at my notes, and these discussions started, you know, a long time ago. And I know that everybody has been involved in various levels, and it couldn't have happened without everybody. So let me thank Sally for being a real team leader on this and for her patience and all the community members. The Trust for Public Lands did so much help for us behind the scenes. King County getting that grant came out immediately in support of acquiring this property. Shelter Homes, who negotiated with us, our incredible staff, our bold city manager. You know, that doesn't always happen where you have somebody who's willing to pull the trigger on something like this. And of course, all my council colleagues, it's wonderful to have this unanimous support. So with that, I will ask for a motion.
I move to adopt resolution 10461, authorizing execution of all documents necessary for the acquisition of property in the Coal Creek Lakemont neighborhood at 7219 and 7331 Lakemont Boulevard Southeast, including a purchase and sale agreement in the amount not to exceed $19.1 million plus related closing costs.
And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so I'm going to ask our council to stay here behind the dais. Maybe we can get Mo's picture on the screen. And can I invite everybody to come up, including staff, and we'll just do a big group picture?
Thank you for including me.
Yeah. Run study session items, right? Okay. Yep. Okay, so I think we'll go ahead at least through our first study session item and maybe think about taking a break at eight. So we have two study session items tonight, and City Manager, I'll let you introduce the first one.
Thank you, Mayor. This first study session item is an update on the city's 2020.
Excuse me, City Manager, just for a moment. I'm going to ask the happy people in the room that, as you leave, maybe we can shut the doors or something so they can chat in the hall. The acoustics are remarkable in this building. Thank you. Okay, you have to celebrate outside the chamber so we can continue our meeting. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. This agenda item is an update on the 2020 Economic Development Plan, and the staff will review the last four years' worth of work. But then we'll also turn to looking ahead at updating this plan for the next six years. And they have included in this presentation and the agenda materials some proposed guiding principles that were drafted for tonight's discussion. So we're joined by members of our Community Development Department, Jesse Canato, our Chief Economic Development Officer, Corbin Hart, our Business Development Manager, and Cameron Harper, our Economic Development Specialist. And with that, I will turn it over to Jesse.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. We hope that the crowd outside is equally as excited after our presentation, though we're not proposing any parks today. We are very excited to be here to kick off conversations about the next six years of economic development in Bellevue. I can remember when we started the conversations about the current plan in 2019 and what a journey it's been since then. Today Bellevue is bigger, bolder, and amazingly more beautiful than it was in 2019. And so we're carrying that strength with us into conversations about the new ED plan. Tonight, staff will present overarching principles that will guide the consultants' work and staff work over the next year on updating the plan. We believe that these guiding principles will maintain our position as the second-largest business hub in Washington State and our reputation as a business-friendly environment that welcomes the world. After our Q and A, we'll incorporate your feedback and wrap that into the RFP that'll go out for our consultants. And so with that, after the Q and A, we hope that you will consider directing staff to initiate the update to the Economic Development Plan for the next six years. For tonight's agenda, we will have it in two parts, as the city manager said. First part, we will recap the work, the lessons learned, and the outcomes that are a result of the current plan. Bellevue in many ways is in a position of strength as we move forward, many of it in thanks to the value and the diversification work that we've done over the last several years. Then we'll pivot to talk about the update and the guiding principles. Again, the principles reflect the ongoing need to adapt to the world around us. Bellevue is in a very strong position economically and culturally, but we face some challenges ahead as the world around us changes in terms of U.S. trade policy, U.S. industrial policy, global population trends, and the tech innovations, many of which are being pioneered right here in Bellevue. So staying ahead of the curve. And with that, I will hand it over to my staff to give the details.
Thank you, Jesse. So as Jesse alluded to, we wanted to set a little bit of a baseline with some definitions that are in our current plan. So right now, we'll be talking a lot about the guiding principles. These really set the overall direction for the plan update, provide some, again, general direction, but don't get too specific. They really are there to inform the development of the foundational and direct strategies of the plan. So our foundational strategies, these are really the long-term and ongoing activities that really recognize every city work stream contributes to economic development. They lay the foundation for the city's business climate. Good example of something like this might be transportation infrastructure, something that's vital to economic development, but might not be in scope to get super specific on in this plan. And then we have our direct strategies. These are really where we get a lot more focused into specific actions, work plan items, strategies that we want to implement over the next, in this case, six years. These really are those prioritized focused areas. And for some examples of those, I wanted, we can go through our current plan. So this is our 2020 through 2025 plan, was adopted in November 2020. Again, this is the Citywide Economic Development Plan. Some examples of those foundational strategies I was just talking about in our current plan include diversity, equity, and inclusion, housing, transportation, and the overall business climate. We have some direct strategies where we, again, get more focused in six specific target areas. And this is where a lot of those specific tactics are laid out. That includes capacity building and partnerships, small business, entrepreneurship, workforce, retail, the creative economy, and tourism. And so as an update on our current plan's progress, first of all, for your reference in our agenda memo, we have a detailed progress tracker of all the different specific strategies in the plan. But overall, we have 97% of the strategies complete or in progress. We have, I believe, five or six strategies that are still in progress. A lot of those are in our tourism section, as you can see by the timing. November 2020 was when we adopted the plan in the middle of COVID. The tourism sector was very heavily impacted, and that resulted in some delays in implementation of some of those items. However, that's actually been the section we've seen the most progress on in the past two years. Specific example being the tourism promotion area implementation. Some other highlights of the current plan include the launch of the Workforce Development Program, completion, ongoing implementation of the retail study. Again, the tourism promotion area, the Belred Arts District Community Alliance, great new business district organization. We launched the Startup 425 Accelerator Program, which actually has one of their sessions going right now, one of their final ones. And we'll have their graduation in late January that we're excited to have. And then expansions of some of our business district organizations' capacity as well. And so before we get into a lot of the data, the benchmarking, all those items, we thought it was a good chance to take a step back and talk about a lot of our wins. Everything from Amazon going up to 17,500 employees within Bellevue to creation of the Belred Arts District Community Alliance, to landmark public art, first-in-Bellevue events, hosting thousands of people outside City Hall, new restaurants, retail, small businesses, and everything in between. This slide was very hard to make, and that's a really good problem to have, to make sure we're encompassing everything and, you know, making sure we're recognizing all of those specific items. And with that, I'll hand it over to Cameron to talk about data.
Thank you. So talking through at a high level a couple of our outcomes from 2020 until now, overall, we saw a lot of variance in these metrics because of the COVID-19 pandemic, but we do see those general themes of recovery and growth. So starting with total employment, which increased by 3% from pre-pandemic levels to now. Commercial office vacancy increased significantly, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in the next slide. Despite that, retail sales increased by 16%. Our retail sector continues to perform very strongly, and we actually have the highest per capita sales in the region. Unemployment has increased by about one and a half percentage points. That's from pre-pandemic levels until now. So of course, from the peak of the COVID-19 pandemic, unemployment. So of course, from the peak of the COVID-19 pandemic, unemployment has decreased significantly, but we have seen a little bit of an uptick recently because of layoffs impacting our region. The number of small businesses has increased by 1%, and annual overnight visitors have returned to pre-COVID levels of 2.2 million, and we expect that to continue to grow in the coming years. So diving a little bit deeper into commercial office vacancy. Office vacancy is just one of the metrics that we look at to get a picture of the overall health of our economy. Our current Economic Development Plan identifies five peer cities that have similar economies to Bellevue that you see on this chart. Bellevue, which is shown by the thicker black line, is showing a general upward trend, meaning commercial office vacancy is increasing over time, and that is similar to our peers and what we are seeing nationally. So Bellevue currently stands at around 24% vacancy, and that is all-encompassing of all of Bellevue. So downtown itself is actually at about 16% vacancy. So if we only had downtown Bellevue on this chart, it would outperform all of our peer cities. On the other hand, Eastgate is at about 41%. So Eastgate would underperform compared to our peer cities, and that's how you get the average of around 24%. There are a number of other metrics that we look at compared to our peer cities, like I mentioned in the previous slide. These will all be updated as a part of the plan update, and that includes our Economic Diversity Index. So now transitioning into the details of our 2025 plan update and starting with the scope of the update. So our purpose statement for the update is to reinforce Bellevue's position as the second-largest employment hub in Washington and the cultural heart of the East Side. This is going to be a six-year plan that is a change from our previous plan, which was a five-year plan. This change is to stagger multiple strategic plans being updated at the same time, as well to better align with the city's budget cycle. This is also a one-city plan, meaning that every work stream contributes to economic development, and we want to recognize that. As I just alluded to, we're also adapting to a new economic landscape that looks very different from when our previous plan was adopted in 2020. So because of that, we are updating our foundational and direct strategies and incorporating new job growth targets from the recently adopted Comprehensive Plan. And I'll hand it back to Corbin to talk about that more.
Yeah, so that's a great segue into this chart here about our recently adopted growth targets specifically related to employment for this slide. So as we, you know, consider that 70,000 growth target out to that 227,000 number in 2020-44, a big element of this plan update will be not only that raw number, but also what is consistent, what is consisting of that employment. So how is that distributed across industries? How is that distributed across employer sizes? Where is that growth occurring? Is it in our major employers, our small businesses? And also ensuring that those employment opportunities are good employment opportunities, living wage. What is encompassed in that number is just as, if not more, important than the number itself. So that's one thing we really want to take and incorporate into this plan update is we're developing those specific direct and foundational strategies. And again, we really want to recognize that we are in a different economic landscape than especially we were in, for instance, in 2020, and even looking back further in Bellevue's history. We have a new top employer in Amazon. We have added small businesses, creative organizations, a lot of office inventory. So if you look at that chart there, we've actually added a little bit more, actually, office inventory in the past four years than we did in the 10 years before 2020. So that's, you know, a lot of growth that is changing our economic landscape overall. We also want to be cognizant, like Cameron alluded to, on unemployment rates and some tech layoffs, tech layoffs impacting our unemployment rate. We know affordability continues to be an issue for some of our small businesses. We also want to recognize those, but also know that we have a lot of opportunity in Bellevue in the future. And this plan update is really how we're positioning ourselves to take advantage of those opportunities and address those issues. And with that, I'll hand it over to Jessie to talk through how we got to some of our guiding principles.
Thanks, Corbin. As we pivot into the proposed guiding principles, we just wanted to take a moment to reflect on how the insight that is encompassed in them. So as the council knows, it takes a lot of continuous engagement to keep Bellevue a place where businesses, residents, and visitors want to be. And so we do continuous engagement on the economic development side. The, in 2024 alone, we've had over 300 touchpoints that informed the guiding principles. We've also done a lot of engagement with our local and regional partners, the Downtown Association, the Chamber, Greater Seattle Partners, and the Economic Development Board. We have continued to do a lot of data benchmarking against global trends and our peer cities. There's a lot of frenemies out there that love Bellevue and also would love to have what we have. And all of that pre-work, all of that continuous engagement, the surveys that we've done around the Grand Connection, the engagement we've done with small businesses in old Bellevue and Belred, all is reflected in these orbital-level guiding principles that we're about to present. And of course, that does not end the community engagement. This is just what's going into these guiding principles. Our consultants and staff will continue to engage with our small business community, our entrepreneurs, our community-based organizations throughout the next year to help shape the specific strategies and tactics that we will come back to you with around this time next year. And with that, it's back to Corbin.
Thank you, Jessie. So as we go through these guiding principles, just a couple housekeeping notes upfront. First of all, you should have a one-pager in front of you that lists them all. So we're going to go through on each slide, so you can refer back on your own time as well through these. The top line is going to be the specific guiding principle, and then we provided some bullet points below that are items that could be something more specific that may be coming up in like a direct strategy or foundational strategy, for instance. These aren't meant to be all-encompassing, where we don't know what we don't know to a certain extent, but we wanted to give the council a little bit more color on what this might encompass. So this first guiding principle is really related to economic diversification, retention of our existing businesses, and promoting innovation and expanding new industries. And really, this is based off a lot of the feedback we've received and benchmarking we've also done around retaining the existing assets we have, and then being really intentional about where Bellevue is competitive in the national economy in terms of new industry development and what new areas might Bellevue be well-positioned for. Second one is related to supporting the success of our small business and entrepreneur community with a focus on those of diverse backgrounds and minimizing displacement. You'll notice this one has a little bit more specificity. Obviously, we have a robust small business support program currently, but we want to, we've heard a lot of focus for, on those diverse communities and small business displacement, especially as we update zoning in multiple different areas. Scaling and sustaining enhanced services by leveraging partnerships and new implementation tools. So if you look at our current plan, this might be related to, for instance, some of the strategies in our capacity building section that really relate to a lot of the enhanced services that are demanded by the community, visitors, workers, that sort of thing, that the city might not be best positioned to provide. So how we build the capacity of the organizations that are best positioned is really the focus of this element. Positioning the creative economy, inclusive of arts, culture, and new creative industries, is a key driver of Bellevue's economy. The creative economy is a really important sector in Bellevue, and we mean that in a really broad sense of the word. This is everything from our arts nonprofits to our small businesses, up to even maybe some of our major employers that could be included in that bucket. And a lot of the cultural events, we were at a BDA breakfast related to the office market. And one of the items that was talked about related to office market development was actually a lot of our cultural scene and amenities for employees and that sort of thing. So really referencing how a lot of these are interconnected as well. Strengthening Bellevue's workforce to provide, to meet future industry demands and provide access to opportunity. So this is really in relation to work-based learning opportunities, how we provide the workforce that attracts employers here. Nine times out of 10, when we're talking to a new employer who wants to be in Bellevue, it's because we have one of the most talented workforces in the nation. And so we want to continue to have that asset, and we also want to continue to make sure our residents can access the opportunity that is available within the city as well. Elevating Bellevue's districts and public spaces to foster unique identities, ensuring they are welcoming to residents, workers, and visitors. So this is really related to a lot of our district development items and making sure a lot of our different districts across Bellevue have unique identities and unique niches, which is how they really perform well. And last but not least, highlighting Bellevue's culture, world-class amenities, natural environment to advance its status as a premier tourist destination. So a lot of this is going to be in relation to aligning with Visit Bellevue's newly adopted Destination Development Plan, how we work with the Convention Center Authority and Visit Bellevue, and also what role the city plays in developing its tourism economy as well. And with that, I'll hand it over to Cameron to talk through our timeline very quickly.
So getting into the actual timeline of this update, tonight, of course, is our council kickoff, tonight, December 10. And then in the new year, we will start our community engagement and data analysis portions of the update. We will return to council in late quarter two of 2025. That's when we will conduct a mid-project check-in. We will return to council again in quarter three of 2025, and that's when we will present our draft recommendations. And then finally, in quarter four of 2025, that's when we will come back for final approval.
And that wraps up the staff presentation on the broad and nimble guiding principles. After the Q and A, we ask that you consider directing us to initiate the work.
Okay, thank you. And you're seeking feedback on, what you said, the guiding principles as well as direction. Okay, let's start with Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. As you know, economic development has always been on the city's agenda, top agenda. However, since I came to the council, we have priorities enlisted, and so we all recognize without a healthy economy, we don't have the resources to make things happen. So there's a lot of things we can make happen. I believe the most important one is still what, you know, we've seen, what happened even during today's and tonight's meeting. It's the people that makes the difference. It's the people who are innovative, the people who are talented, people who companies want to employ, people who can make things happen. The company would depend on them. So I think that's really the first and primary prerogative. And I'm glad to see that you have listed all those. So I want to compliment you first. By and large, you know, you are right on track. The only thing I want to add is maybe a few emphasis, maybe a little bit of refinement. People from all over the world will come here, and they bring, they are talents, they are educated, they are motivated. They want the company to do better, and they want to be creative. So we need to provide a place for them to feel that they're welcome, right? Feel a place that they belong, feel the place that where they can be educated, their future is bright, they have a future here. You know, the kids can find a job and go have a great, great, great future. So I think that's important. So I want to emphasize global. Where we have it, we don't want to lose them. And all the big companies, Amazon, Microsoft, T-Mobile, they are here today, but they could move tomorrow, right? Depending on where the workforce goes and depending what the tax rules are, whatever it is, maybe. But nobody can replace the talents that we have. So I think that will attract people, and the talents will become another Microsoft, another Amazon. So I think that's really the basis of perpetual growth. So I really want to appreciate that. One other point I want to make is it's a little bit chicken and egg situation. You mentioned that, do we want to have a small business? Do we want to have a company here first before the talents comes, workforce? I believe that it's clear from what I just said, it's talent first. Then I think company will come, and business will grow, will flourish. Okay, so the other one is, we are already a technology center. So I would like to identify which technology that we are actually superior, that we can actually help develop, help the talents focus, give the talents, the people, the opportunity to flourish and grow, to be innovative, create, and to be entrepreneurial in those areas. So far, I don't know that you have identified, but I think we'll be useful. You know, we can figure that out. We have, second, third one is the partnership. I think we have great partners already, we're Greater Seattle Partners. They are seeking global outreach, which is very good because we know that there's a natural pool of talent who would want to come to this country. It's just about to let people know about it and make sure they're welcome, and there's opportunity here that they can actually flourish. So I believe, and also you mentioned PSRC, also I'm glad to point it out. We have regional partners that are also in the region. They are all looking for the same goal as we're looking. May not be specific. We are looking for a particular kind of talent, but in a company. But other places in the region may be looking for different, but the principle is the same. We want to be sure that they find the talent to meet their needs in their local jurisdictions. So we want, we need to have partnership. We need to be more broad-based. We need to be more helpful, because if we bring talent, we may not keep all the talents because they might not fit us all. But these talents can fit other people in other regions. So I think this is unselfish sharing of talents, and other people can help us, and we can help them.
Thank you.
The other one is, I believe that we need to be flexible, and we have lots of things that we need here, is energy, right? We're talking about energy. We need to explore some of that. We have, we are energy companies here, we have modular companies that are being touted in this region, maybe even in Eastern Washington. So we have lots of ways that we want to make sure that we have resources that can actually help the environment, the climate change. All these things are things that we can help the whole state, whole region. So I think that makes a difference, how much we can actually be a player in this. So I think this is really, yeah, so it's really great plan. I like what you're going to be putting out, but I just want to be sure it's a little bit more specific. Okay, a little more specific for each of us out there. We can say, hey, this is what we are looking for, and what else can we do to help you? Not just for us, Bellevue, but for the whole region. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I'm going to say I'm equally excited about economic development, so it wasn't just about the Save Coal Creek area. So thank you for this presentation. I feel like this is such a moment where we can look back at the last four years and then say, where are we going in the next six years? So I appreciate that because now we've adopted our comp plan. We know what our targets are for jobs and housing, so the number of residents that are going to be here. And I appreciate the fact that as we launch, we are reviewing the guiding principles and updating them. You know, when I think about this, I want to make sure that we are really future-focused because, as you said, the economic landscape is always changing. So kind of like the Wayne Gretzky, can we start to get a sense for where the puck is going so we're not standing still? Because a lot, when you brought up transportation, what I thought about is that anything that we build takes a while, so we really need to be future-focused. I also like the idea of, Councilmember Lee said flexible, I wrote down adaptable, right? So how do we stay pretty nimble in our plan to be able to be a catchment for opportunities that may come up? I really appreciate the fact that the word innovation is in here because there were somewhere else we said vibrant economy. And to me, it's vibrant, and we want that innovative culture and spirit, so making sure that we really embed that into. Because innovation, to me, means that we're going to get a little messy. So there may be some businesses that are here, and they need to morph and change. And while they're doing that, we want to be able to be supportive of them doing that. So I really like that. I don't know if the deputy mayor will bring this up, but I know that when we were talking about our land use maps and zoning, there was some discussion about, you know, what about biomed or some type of, on the health and medical side of things? So is that something we- So is that something we can have a particular focus, especially since East Gate has a 40% vacancy? Surely we can start to imagine possibilities with those property owners about what might be possible in that area, especially since ST3 is going to be going through that area as that planning happens. Really like the Business Improvement District in Goal Number Three because when we were on the BDA tour, both in San Diego and New York City, we saw the amount of vibrancy that business improvement districts with some funds can bring, even if they're really modest, to just really make communities pop and neighborhoods. So I really, really like that. On number four, B, it says event spaces. I think we also need to, just like with the dance studio that I know some of you went to see, practice spaces, so not just for events, but also to be able to help those art and culture organizations with how they practice and make spaces for that. On Goal Number Seven, really, really important element, I don't know if I would have labeled that number seven. It seems like maybe it should rise a little bit higher in the, in the goals. But love the fact that now we have Bell, we're focusing culinary, we have the airport shuttle, so we're just really laying the groundwork for doing even more. We're tourism. I think this plan encompasses 2026, so I'd like to understand, are we able to leverage something around FIFA 2026 in terms of being able to draw some tourism here from that? And I think that there's going to be lots of other kind of worldwide events that are going to be happening in our region, so let's make sure they come across the lake to Bellevue as well. I agree with Councilmember Lee that as we look at this, let's make sure that we also embed that international, global piece within some of these pieces. So both the fact that we are very diverse in Bellevue as well as the fact that we're drawing people from around the globe into our area. And then also agree with Councilmember Lee about partnerships because I was thinking about small business, how we track them, can we help highlight them? Partnerships like the Small Business Saturday with Intentionalist, thank you. Think they've been really active and so really leveraging these systems and organizations that already have a platform in place where we can just be a springboard and launch. Last two points. One is I noticed in the former plan, there was one that was a barrier that we hadn't started, and I do think it's important to take a look at that shared parking program on nights and weekends because when we think about transportation, to the degree we can leverage existing infrastructure and find the way to do that shared parking. So can we shake loose the barrier sooner rather than later? And then lastly, I really like the timeline because having a draft by July, to me, means that we can start thinking about if there's something in there that we would want to consider in the mid-buy, that we're getting that early notification or information there so that we can have that be considered as we finalize the plan in the fall. So all in all, love everything that's in here and excited for us to get started. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the presentation and all the hard work that's gone into this plan thus far. Quick question just to kick off here, and I'm just curious about the timeline. Why is it that tonight, we're looking at initiating the update before we've done the community engagement and the data analysis? I just want to understand why it's flowing in that way. Why not do that prior to asking us to initiate the update?
Absolutely, Councilmember Newenhouse. Tonight's work helps inform the request for proposals that we'll put out for consultants, and we want those consultants on board to help us with the data analysis and the community engagement.
Okay.
That's the reason for sequencing.
Okay, I appreciate it. So all the, all the community engagement and the analysis that we get from that will go into the actual update and will go into the plan going, going forward from 2026. Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure we're on the same page with that. There's some really great things in here, and I'm not going to belabor the great points that Councilmembers on and Lee have already, already, already made. What I'm concerned about is that we're asking the right questions, and, and, and maybe that's what we're going to get into in terms of the analysis and the consultants, et cetera. But I want to make sure the right questions are being. So why is it that small businesses only grew 1%? Are those, you know, why is it of 11,000-plus new businesses, only 1% growth in, in small businesses? That would be one of my core questions and, and concerns because I'll, I'll be honest, more and more that I talk to small businesses, they are struggling in Bellevue. They are struggling in Bellevue. And I don't see an emphasis on small businesses. Now, if we want to become a big, a big, you know, a big corporate town and only have the, be focused on the Amazons and the Googles of the world, you know, I guess we could do that. But the last time we spoke, small businesses, you know, actually account for the vast majority of employment in the city as well as the services. And, and, and it's those services that attract a lot of times these bigger companies, right? To all the small restaurants and, and, you know, be it ethnic and otherwise, and, and all the dry cleaners and the coffee shops, et cetera. I, I, even listing on here in terms of the, the update and the scope, I forget which slide it was, number one is attracting new businesses. I think right now, we should put retention at the very top of the list and focus on small business, or we're going to start losing more and more. Yes, there are some pressures that we might not be able to control, give the, you know, the, the price of land or the price of, of rent, et cetera. Maybe there are certain things that we, we can do, but I'm just raising the alarm bell a little bit on this because if, if it's not permitting, that's, that's an issue, or it's signage, that's an issue. There, there is more and more constraint on our, on our small businesses. So I, I just want to raise that as, as something that I believe we really need to address sooner, sooner than, than, than later. I'll give you a quick second, maybe touch on that if you'd like, I think, I think you would before I go to my next point.
Thank you, Councilmember Newenhouse. Yes, and I'll ask Corbin to share some of the details on the data, but just to share the high-level response. Absolutely, we understand the need to support and retain as many of our existing businesses as possible. Keeping, we need duty to keep in mind that this data set also includes COVID period, so we did lose a significant amount of small businesses during that period. We also have lost a significant amount of small businesses during the recent redevelopment cycle. A lot of the towers in downtown Bellevue now have replaced former strip centers that took out some of our small businesses, and we're working to backfill that. So that is one of the, the tension points with, with our growth. The other thing that we have been doing during the current plan is a lot of work on small business. So the retail study, things like we're working with Development Services on the update to the sign code that's currently in process. There's a whole host of other small business supporting work that we're currently doing and will continue to do as we go through the update. But I'll ask Corbin to speak to some of the, the details behind the small business data and some of the work that his team does on a daily basis to support our smaller businesses.
Yeah, so I think Jesse caught the, the COVID change with a lot of the small businesses there that, you know, it's really undeniable the impact that had on a lot of our small businesses. We were able to do a number of interventions, but those impacts were still, still relevant. So that's why you see that specifically there in the data. The, one of the things I'll point out is Jesse talked about the redevelopment cycles. One of the things we've started doing and seen a moderate amount of success in is doing a lot more proactive outreach to businesses that are at risk of displacement. So we, for instance, the Park Row redevelopment that's in downtown currently, near downtown park, that's one area where we did some really proactive outreach and handholding of a lot of those businesses through finding new sites within Bellevue and that sort of thing. We found, again, some moderate amounts of success. We unfortunately weren't, weren't able to find locations for all of them. But one of the things we're doing as we're looking forward is also coming out of our business surveys, we recognize affordability is one of the biggest issues for our small businesses. And, you know, in the 2021 survey, in the 2023 survey, I expect that will be the case in the 2025 survey. So one of the ways we're looking to address that is through a new incentive in the Wilberton Land Use Code that came out of the retail study. I won't preview that too much, I'll let you all get to that when you get to that. But we are making some interventions based off our current plan, and really why, what we're hoping to get out of the planned update is what some of those new innovative methods might be looking forward beyond what we're already doing. Because definitely, on a day-to-day basis, small businesses are the ones we talk to the most and get the most feedback from, and as you pointed out, make up 97% of our business base.
So how many total businesses are there in Bellevue?
At the moment, I believe around 16,000.
16,000. And of those 16,000 through, from 2020 to 25, if I understand your presentation correctly, we had 300 touchpoints.
No, that, that 300 touchpoints are in the past year.
In the past year?
Yeah.
Okay, so how many touchpoints throughout, is that on average each year, 300?
It ebbs and flows. It was probably a lot more in the beginning, actually, due to COVID and their respective outreach on the specific programs.
Okay. I guess I'm just not convinced that we understand the pain points of small businesses right now, so I'm just going to be a real strong advocate for them. So I don't expect you to have all the answers right now, but when you come back, that'll just be a real point of emphasis for me is that we truly understand where the pain points are and how we can help them and, and help them be successful as well as helping those small businesses that are already here that need that help in order for them to, to survive. So I'll end there. Thank you so much.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you very much on this. It's, this presentation, I think it brings highlights of where we're going and from the prior and current plans and the roadmap for new plan, we set that out, and that's important. One of the things I did notice, just in terms of the conversation we're just having, is well, number two here in the draft guiding principles, supports the successes of Bellevue's small businesses and future entrepreneurs.
Councilmember Stokes, would you, you know, maybe you could just make your own comments versus trying to redirect what I'm advocating for, for small businesses? If you'd like to make your own points, that would be great. If you'd like to have a conversation with me afterwards about how you disagree with my points, we can do that.
Come in.
Sir, I'm not disagreeing with your point.
I'm going to ask that we redirect the conversation to what you're saying, and go ahead and give us your points on, your feedback on the council priorities and principles for the economic development.
Okay, all right.
Thanks.
I thought it was helping strengthen it, but anyhow. And the other, you know, we, this, I think this is a very good program thing laid out here, all the different things, seven different things, and I think most of this stuff is, is, if not all, captured. And I think it's important to look at this and say, is this, are we positioning correctly and all that? That was what I was going to get, get a look to and talk about. So I'm, I'm sorry I got delayed there. So, you know, really, thank you for this presentation. It's, it's the highlights from the prior and current plan and the roadmap for the new future, and I think that's very excellent. We can always improve on those, we'll be working through those because it is just the plan at this point. I think you're looking at a lot of things that are very important to meet the challenges that, overall challenges that we have. And we're changing so fast, and we continue to be a city where you want to be for businesses, artists, and, and visitors. Yes, we have things to work on, and, and I think we, we're all looking at those, and that's important. You have to do both those things. But looking at these guiding principles, some are familiar and other parts are new in a certain extent. What's an emerging area that you particularly knew or are different from the previous budget plan?
Corbin, would you like to speak to some of the ways we'll identify the emerging opportunities with the consultants?
Yeah, I think especially in the, the first guiding principle, the highlight of what new industries we might be looking at or Bellevue might be competitive for. That's definitely a new area. A lot of our district-based work, especially looking back at our previous plan, in 2019, 2020, we, a lot of that was in its infancy, for lack of a better word, putting aside Bellevue Downtown Association. And we've seen a lot of progress in that space, but as we're looking forward, new areas like Crossroads, Factoria, and how we can build district-based organizations to support some of the businesses in those areas is another new, really, I think, new emerging area in the planned update. Off the top of my head, a lot of work in tourism, Councilmembers on pointed out FIFA is an opportunity in that space as well. So how we, I think there are a number of different emerging areas within each one of those buckets. I don't know if I missed any, Jesse.
I think that's a good, a good summary for the moment.
Yeah. So I, I think part of it is too, that I'm really interested in is the creative economy and the inclusion of those arts, culture, and new creative industries as, as a driver. What, I'm just interested in seeing the whole, the full plan and everything when we get to it, but I do think that's, that's really something we've talked about a lot, and it seems to be coming along, but again, it's one of those we need to focus on. I think overall, this is a good outline of where we need to go on this, and that's what we're planning on tonight with the update of the, the plan, where it's going, and we're getting a lot of really good input. And I hope we continue to have, not just having this conversation tonight, and then maybe next year sometime, we come back and talk on it. We're all, you know, you're really focused on things, you're going to be doing a lot of work. I think we, we need to have the conversations a little more than we, we usually do on these. And, you know, as, as we've been saying about this, we're, we're seeing things out there, we're working on this and coming with, to bring what we hear and what we're interested in. So I think, but I, I really appreciate, and I think the working together between staff and the council have been, in my opinion, really, really good. And it's, it's, and I think we have that behind us, and we know what we're looking for, we know, we can talk about what we're missing and all that, and we're, we're able to get up and have conversations that are open, and we may disagree, we talk about them, but I think, again, you're, you're laying this out in a very good way so we can really work together to make it move forward. And the challenge is there, and we have the opportunity, and I think we're on the road to do that. But thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Councilmember Hamilton, and then I'll call on Deputy Mayor Malacutian after you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. I'm just going to start off with, by saying yes, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of moving this forward. Clearly, the existing plan has produced great outcomes, so it's time to build on that and update the plan to meet our needs going forward. Like Councilmember Stokes mentioned, I'd like to have a few briefings, a study session or two along the way so that we can hear how things are going and provide some additional input. Certainly clear, you've made good progress on reaching key milestones. I think the workforce development and business district expansions are notable and worth continued focus. Certainly looking forward to seeing what we, what winds up on the new updated list. Appreciate your assessment of the changed economic landscape, including the emphasis on redevelopment pressures in Bell Red and Wilberton on small and creative businesses. I think that overall, the plan structure looks good, and if it has served us well, I think we should stay with that. Just kind of curious, drilling down a little bit, so, you know, and I see, I was looking at Slide eight and, you know, looking at some of the outcomes, and, and I'm wondering, you know, when you go through your analysis, do you project expected tax revenue when considering which specific economic, economic development strategies to adopt? I mean, I, I know that overall, it's clear in here that, you know, the whole goal is generally support a more vibrant economy, but do we look at specific actions and consider prioritizing them based on what we expect the return on our investment to be?
The return on investment is something that we would look at with the consultant. So we would take a look at a variety of factors, including how strong is Bellevue or this region in that particular industry? What would it take to attract or grow, attract new companies or grow existing ones in those sectors? Does Bellevue make sense for the operating structure of those businesses? Whether it is, do we have the space? Some spaces, some industries require much more land than we're able to provide in Bellevue because of our geographic constraints. Is Bellevue an expensive city? Are there ways for us to mitigate those, those cost structures? So there's a variety of ways that we would look at whether a specific growth area is an opportunity for Bellevue and whether we would want to recommend pursuing it.
Okay, and is that a data point that you look at then, the projected actual revenue? Is that, is that carefully considered? If we were to invest X dollars here, you know, with economic development, what would we get back from that? Do you, do you track that at that level?
That is something we would look at with the consultants, is what are the, the benefits from a sales tax, BNO, real estate, or other tax generating perspective?
Okay, so that's included in here, doesn't necessarily need to be a guiding principle, but that's included in the work that you're doing?
Correct.
Okay, great. Okay, great. I also wanted to just put in a, a voice for the Business Improvement District. I think we've learned a lot about that, so I appreciate that being brought up. And then do we look at like specific areas like Eastgate? So we have this high vacancy rate there. Is that gonna be a part of this work and what could we do to kind of focus on, on that particular kind of geographic area of our economy and how we could enhance it?
Yeah, so I'll share a couple of, of data points and then ask Corbin to, to fill in. So yes, as the council knows, Eastgate and Factoria are next up in the neighborhood area planning rotation. And so our work would include coordinating with the planning, the long-range planning teams to look at Eastgate and say, what makes sense for that area economically? What industries could we support in that area for the long-term growth of Bellevue?
Yeah, the only, the only thing I'd add to that is that, that will, we actually, in staff discussions have talked about doing a little bit more of a focus on Eastgate, given the highly elevated vacancy rates, the small businesses within the area as well being affected by that. So that is definitely a specific area of focus for the plan update.
And, but as a part of the neighborhood plan, not as a part of our economic development?
So it would be both. So we would make sure that, that those two documents are speaking to each other, that the ED plan and the future plan for Eastgate both are synced correctly.
Okay, great. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Deputy Mayor Malakutian.
I appreciate you, Jesse, Corbin, and Cameron and other staff members for this amazing work and initiative. I, I like that we have a success rate of ninety-seven percent of implementing the current plan's action. I think that's impressive and whenever we hear something ninety percent above, I think we should celebrate ninety-seven percent is almost one hundred percent. I really appreciate my colleagues. Basically, every one of them so far said something that I wanted to say. Councilmember Lee mentioned about talent first. Councilmember Zahn mentioned my dear topic, life science investment. Councilwoman UNHausen mentioned emphasizing on a small businesses that is the fabric of our city and economy. Councilmember Stokes mentioned about creative economy and I appreciate that. And my only question asked by Councilmember Hamilton about Eastgate and what are we going to do about that vacancy? I just have now three things that I want that we focus moving forward, if possible. I think we are not focusing enough on the gig economy and freelance workers in a modern workforce. These are very, become a significant part of that. I would love to see more strategies to attract and retain young talents, specifically in light of high housing costs in the area of you are not, you are going to see all of the young folks are not staying here, unfortunately. I would also love how we can emphasize on more partnership internationally with businesses, have business connection and global partnership, if possible, to diverse our economy. I, beside these three area of focus, I think is a great thing that we are doing and I appreciate you all for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so I really enjoyed listening to my colleagues' comments. It was, it was very comprehensive. Two things I'd like to talk about is, have we thought about how, how we might rezone Eastgate to accommodate different kind of business, like if we wanted to attract a certain kind of life science or other types of businesses that require a, a special type of rezone, so?
That kind of work would be considered with the consultants as we think about what fits in and what would make most economic sense for Eastgate. And then that would, we would work then collaboratively with our long-range planning teams and Development Services to figure out if and how, what modifications are needed to allow those, those uses to come in.
Because one thing we might want to think about is our hospital district is getting really crowded. We still have a little space there, but if we were to continue expanding in population, we might require more medical services. And so we might want to consider making that a hospital district up there, too. So that's just a thought. I remember meeting, and Pinnacle is kind of on top of mind tonight as we go to our next topic, but I remember meeting with the developer of Pinnacle long ago and them talking about putting in smaller retail spaces so that they are essentially more affordable for the small business. And I wonder if you have been, A, if you've been in touch with any of our developers to talk about the potential for that? And B, if, when we discuss our land use work, if we might continue doing some kind of incentive for affordable office space, not just affordable housing? So maybe those, you can collaborate with our, our Development Department and think about that.
Yes, that is definitely part of our, our ongoing conversations with Development Services.
Perfect. Okay, that's all for me. So, yes?
I have a procedural question.
Okay.
That's okay. I was reminded in my head that vibrant economy is one of our strategic target areas. And in our budget, we actually have six objectives. So I just want to procedurally make sure that I'm clear. Are we ultimately gonna replace what's in there with these guiding principles? Or how will we align our strategic target area items and the preamble? I, I started looking here because I thought it might be nice to have a preamble paragraph and then I thought, well, I think it's already over here. So I'm just wanted to procedurally understand how we will dovetail this work and the guiding principles with what's in our strategic target area and the language that's already there.
Yes, very good question, Councilmember. So as with many of the, the strategies and documents that the city works with, they speak to each other. So the strategic target area was informed by the Economic Development Plan and the ED's team. And so we will carry that into, that's represented in the work tonight. It'll be represented in the work with the consultant. And then if there are adjustments to that, needed for that strategic target area in the future, we would inform that process out of the consultant's work. So they speak to each other.
Okay, so what, so this is draft guiding principles because as we bring the consultant in and we get feedback, it will morph and change and then the two will dovetail together.
Well, aren't STAs more for the council?
They're for the council and for the budget processes.
Right.
Yes.
And these are for staff and?
And so the, the guiding principles will inform the, the broad work that the consultant does. How they look at the different avenues for supporting small business, for supporting innovation. These give a broad sense of the, the direction that the city would like to go in for economic development.
Okay, so maybe when you come back for some touchpoints, I, for me, I would like to better understand how these dovetail together because they, these are for council, but then the staff are implementing, so they should be very complimentary, if not, let's not duplicate. Let's just kind of dovetail them. Thank you.
In my, in my mind, maybe you could talk about how the strategic target areas inform these guiding principles that the departments then create.
Yes, we could definitely make sure that that is more transparent when we come back with the updates.
That would be great. Okay, so with that, can we have a motion?
Certainly, Mayor. I move to direct staff to initiate the update to Bellevue's Economic Development Plan for twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-three-one.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that passes, moves forward. Thank you. Appreciate it. And we're gonna take a break and come back at twenty-five-two.
Covers one of the remaining Next Right Work actions initiated by the council in twenty twenty-two. The action proposes increases to residential floor area ratio in mixed-use districts throughout the city to expand housing opportunities. And as I indicated, it's information, but important to get council input to help frame the further discussions with stakeholders and the community on this proposal. So from Development Services, we have Nick Whipple, our Code and Policy Director, Matthew Menard, Senior Planner, and Rebecca Horner, the Director of Development Services, is also here tonight. From Community Development, they're joined by Planning Director Tara Johnson. And with that, I will hand it over to Nick.
Great, thank you, City Manager Carlson. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, and members of the council. As noted, we are here tonight to talk about the Housing Opportunities in Mixed Use Areas Code Amendment. And it is information only. This is serving as kind of a midpoint check-in. As noted by the City Manager, this was initiated by council in twenty twenty-two. And so we have done some outreach since this was first initiated. And we wanted to share kind of an update of, of that outreach and then where we're headed for next steps. So we'll start with a little bit of background on Next Right Work, just as a refresher. And then we'll talk about how we are proposing to adjust the scope for this housing opportunities in mixed-use areas based on the, the changed conditions that we'll talk about here. And we'll also note the Phase One outreach that has been completed and we'll talk about our outreach ahead of us. So as a reminder for Next Right Work, this was a work plan item that council had initiated in July of twenty twenty-two. The actions that you all picked were to increase production of market rate and affordable housing. There were five actions that you selected. You'll see more than five items on the list because some of them include multiple phases for us to be able to tackle them. So the red checkboxes indicate which items have been completed by council. These were items that required either an ordinance or resolution. And we are gonna focus tonight on the increased FAR for residential. But just to walk through the actions, there was the micro-apartments code amendment that council adopted. We are working currently on encouraging middle-scale housing in our residential areas. The first phase of that work was an ADU Accessory Dwelling Unit Reform Code Amendment that related to attached accessory dwelling units. The Phase Two work will work on detached accessory dwelling units and then middle housing. So that's one to four units with six units in some locations. And then the third phase of that, after the rules are set on DADUs and middle housing, we are proposing a pre-approved DADU design program to support the permitting of those types of units. There was also some work on simplifying the permitting process and expediting permitting for affordable housing. That was tackled through a couple of code amendments. And then we also have the Reduced Fee Program that council had adopted, going on more than a year ago now. So for tonight, though, we are focused on that increased floor area ratio for residential development. The first phase was advanced for this project as a temporary IOC interim official control that applied to the downtown. There are two areas that were excluded from that interim official control. And that was to provide some early progress on the update. You did hear in public comment tonight some comments around the Pinnacle project. That was one of the projects that took advantage of the downtown interim official control. That project was afforded additional height in exchange for providing affordable housing in the project itself. And so that item is still in the review process. It is vested to the IOC. And so any kind of work on permanent code amendments would not have an impact on the vested project. But we are certainly hearing a lot of community interest on that project. The Development Services Department is processing a design review for that and is working with the developer, is listening to the community. The developer is also needing to respond to these comments as well. And then, as Matthew will share, we're learning a lot from the projects that took advantage of the IOC and we're having a better understanding of some of the trade-offs that we would like the Planning Commission to also take a close look at as we continue to process this IOC, or sorry, this, this permanent code amendment now as part of the Phase Two work. So as a reminder, the Homa project was formally named the Phase Two FAR Increase Project. So we have renamed that. This will replace the downtown interim official control and it provides permanent regulations that would apply to our mixed-use areas throughout the city. There are exclusions and we'll talk about that in the next slide with our geographic scope map. The focus of the Homa project is to incentivize residential over commercial development within those mixed-use areas. When this was initiated in two thousand twenty-two, that was more of an issue where we were seeing a lot of office development outcompeting our residential development. So the idea here was to find ways to incentivize the residential for these mixed-use areas. So the scope for this, the geographic scope, is our targeted mixed-use areas. So this scope does remain unchanged, so we're still focused on all the orange areas. And this slide will look familiar to you because it was the slide that we provided when the project was first initiated. We heard some comment about, or confusion rather, about Wilberton and Bellred. I do see some areas that are lit up in those districts. That is an oversight. So we had noted in our materials that there are separate planning projects that are addressing Wilberton and Bellred. And then East Main is not highlighted here and hasn't been highlighted because that was a recent planning effort that the council had adopted in twenty twenty-one. So for those reasons, we have excluded those areas. They have separate planning projects or were recently completed. The scope that was provided when we initiated the project was to convert the density measurement to FAR, floor area ratio. Some of our mixed-use areas use a dwelling unit per acre measurement. And we were finding that the office development actually was getting greater capacity than residential based on the way we were measuring things. Then the other piece of the scope was to increase the residential FAR once we convert it to an FAR and then adjust the affordable housing exemptions, incentives, and new fees. And then analyze and refine the height and form standards. So now I'm gonna pass it to Tara to talk a bit about what's changed since this was first initiated.
Great, thank you, Nick. So wanted to provide a little bit of context. As council is aware, you recently updated the comprehensive plan. We went through that two-and-a-half-year process, which included changes to the plan. It also included a number of changes to the future land use map. The overall plan, of course, sets the foundational policies for the city's growth strategy over the next twenty years. As part of the update, we also had growth targets that were established. So we had thirty-five thousand housing units, seventy thousand jobs. And additionally, earlier this year, council set targets, affordable housing targets, over ten-year timeframes. You were looking at establishing, and recently we've launched the Affordable Housing Strategy Update. You're looking at establishing an additional fifty-seven hundred affordable housing units over a ten-year period. So this presents a really unique opportunity as part of the Homa scope to see if there's opportunity and really incorporate some of the comp plan policy changes and land use map changes as well. In addition, we made a number of changes, as you may recall, to the housing element within the comprehensive plan. And there's really strong policy direction to create diverse housing opportunities, expand options for affordable housing. This also aligns with some of the state mandates around House Bill twelve-twenty, including policy direction for vibrant, well-served neighborhoods. And then really looking at options to provide more residential capacity so people can live closer to where they work and recreate and shop. With that, I'm gonna pass things on to Matthew to talk more about the Homa scope.
Thanks, Tara. So as we mentioned earlier, there have been some conditions that have changed since the original initiation of this project in twenty twenty-two, one of which you've just heard about from our friends in Community Development. The office market has cooled substantially since launch. So office product is not really outcompeting residential. The residential market is also not particularly strong at this point. There are some market conditions that are out of our control that are sort of putting a damper on residential production as well. But residential is now more economically viable than office. So moving this project away from strictly trying to have residential outcompete office in these mixed-use areas, but really looking to encourage more housing and affordable housing in these areas. With that, we did complete an economic analysis to analyze how tweaking some of these levers and sort of the baseline market conditions are at this point. That gave us a good baseline for looking at some of the impediments in the code to housing and housing production and what some tweaks to, say, affordable housing would do to that bottom line for these projects. We have been exploring what we found out through the IOC as well, as Nick mentioned. We did have six projects vested to the IOC, so they can take advantage of that IOC code, even though it's now expired. We are anticipating about two-hundred-and-thirty-five affordable housing units to come out of those six projects, which is approximately five percent of the total amount of units that were produced through the IOC. Beyond just the raw numbers, we are getting that input on the Pinnacle project, as Nick mentioned. So we are hearing- So we are hearing a bit from the community and we'll do some more outreach around the community and especially downtown to hear more about some of the trade offs we've seen between this increased development and the impact on the community with that IOC as well. We do want to update the scope of this project to include changes to the future land use map that were explored through the comprehensive plan. So as Tara mentioned, the comprehensive plan was a two and a half year process. With that process, there was an update to the future land use map. This map guides what our land use should be for the city in the next 20 years. We did have some public comment around this and I do want to address that. It does treat different areas differently. And through the comprehensive plan process, through robust outreach that community development did, through the planning commission process and through this council process, these areas were designated for what we believe was appropriate for the context. So for example, Crossroads has a designation of high-rise mixed use where somewhere like Newport Hills is going to have a designation of mixed use low-rise one, which is one of our lower intensity districts. So with this project, we do want to take the opportunity to update those areas that are not consistent with, between the future land use map and the land use code to be consistent. That does include two new districts that we are going to have to create for mixed use areas. One of those will apply to Crossroads and Factoria. That's going to be our high-rise mixed use designation. And then there is a mixed use low-rise two designation, which will apply to Kelsey Creek and Lakemont, which is also not created under the current zoning designations that the city has. So those will be entirely new zoning districts that we will apply to those areas. There are also certain districts in the city right now that are not particularly conducive to housing development. That's either based on dimensional standards or some other standards requiring a specific use in a specific location. So looking to update those districts to allow housing development and allow redevelopment of certain parcels in those areas to include housing. We do want to be consistent with the form standards that are laid out in the comprehensive plan. There are going to be four specific form categories that will apply to this project that are shown in the comprehensive plan. Low scale and density, which is generally going to be your three to five story building type. That middle scale and density where we're looking more towards seven to 10 stories. A high scale and density, which again will only apply to Crossroads and Factoria. I was looking more towards that 16 to 25 story type. We're probably looking more at 16 stories in those two areas. And that highest scale and density you see there will apply to downtown. It's also being applied to some of the areas in the new Wilburton updates as well. We want to look at the development standards to promote housing. We've been doing a significant amount of outreach amongst the development and affordable housing community to identify those impediments in our current code, whether those are development standards or site standards, to be able to work those into a workable draft or a workable outline before we go to the community to get additional input on some of those trade offs as well. And we are looking to maximize affordable housing with this as directed by council in 2022 as well. We will evaluate two options for affordable housing with this project as we are with the Wilburton project. One will be a mandatory affordable housing program and the other will be a voluntary incentive based program. We will provide both of those options to planning commission, just as we are with the Wilburton project. We have completed an economic analysis. So when we get the specifics of those projects, we can plug that into the economic analysis to make sure that those projects or that affordable housing requirement is not reducing feasibility of these projects. So our development standard trade offs that we're making, we can sort of fit the affordable housing under that give. We will take some of that back for affordable housing. We are also working on an affordable housing nexus study. If you do a fee and lieu program with a mandatory program, you do need to complete a nexus study. It's essentially going to set the top bar for a fee and lieu, which gives us room to negotiate what that fee and lieu would be for that program within that sort of those goalposts. We have a very robust engagement plan with this. This is a big project. It covers a lot of the area of the city. So we want to make sure that we are getting significant public input and a significant data input as well. As I mentioned, we are doing analysis of the IOC, both how those standards have worked and what the community thinks of those standards. We have been meeting with, a lot of the shopping center developers are the most interested in this project. A lot of those parcels are probably the most ripe parcels in the city for this type of five to seven story mixed use development. We've also been meeting with affordable housing providers, both to hear the impediments to affordable housing in the code and also to make sure our economic analysis inputs were correct. We will be going out for additional input from residents, neighborhood associations, community organizations, really anybody who requests a meeting at this point. Once we have a more deep understanding of what the specifics of the code will be and once you all have given us your input on scope, we want to make sure that when we do go to the community, we are representing the final scope and the sort of final draft of the code for their input. So we're not telling them misinformation or having to go back to them and spend more of their time because we've shifted direction. So that is planned to come up after essentially this meeting is complete. We have launched a project website where there's some information on the project as well as my contact information if anyone does want to contact me. We are almost completed to a interactive story map, which will provide an interactive map on a website where people can see the proposed changes to specific areas of the city that are impacted by this. And we'll also include a survey so people can give comments on that website as well. We always work with internal groups like community development here, transportation. There's a significant overlay with economic development, as you just heard. So we will always bring code amendments to internal groups to make sure we're not impacting their work in a negative way and making sure we can work together with them, especially with ongoing neighborhood area planning processes. That's going to be hugely important in this project as well. And all of our projects are also brought to the Eastside Housing Roundtable when they deal with housing. They are the housing experts in the area and we want to make sure that we get their expertise and take that in while we do these projects, as well as the Bellevue Development Committee, which we meet with regularly. So phase one engagement has been completed at this point. It was really engagement with developers and affordable housing developers to make sure our economic analysis inputs were correct. If you don't have the correct inputs, you don't get the correct output. So making sure that those numbers were spot on. So we can really get that balance between affordable housing and market rate housing correct when we go to write the code. As you all know, it's a tough balance to achieve and this economic analysis will make sure that we hit those numbers correctly so we're not impeding residential development, but also getting the affordable housing we need out of this project. We've also taken a significant amount of feedback on some of the impediments to housing in the code currently. What we've heard is building form. Right now, the market is really pushing us towards five stories or seven story building types. That has to do with the building code and what you can build with wood frame buildings at this point. We've heard some concerns about some of our site requirements, especially around multifamily play areas, transition areas and some of the landscaping requirements. We always hear about parking anytime you talk about housing. Parking is hugely expensive to build if you're building structured or underground parking. So it's something that comes up with every time we talk to developers about housing. And we do have some use requirements that either require a certain amount of office or ground floor retail in all buildings in some of these areas. And we've heard that's a major impediment to housing development. It sounds like there's just not enough retail demand to have every building have ground floor retail in some of these less dense areas. So allowing full buildings to be residential rather than requiring that ground floor retail could really spur some housing development. Phase two is really where we go out to the community. So we take those findings from phase one, those impediments that we've heard in the code and bring the community more of an outline or a draft of the code to talk with them about some of the trade offs on what removing some of these requirements or changing some of these requirements would do to the form of the building, to parking and items like that where the community is more concerned and will be more interested in. It allows us to get much more targeted and direct impact from the neighborhood to hear what they're really concerned about around these specific items. We will also run this through the affordable housing developers and the development committee to make sure that when we have specifics of the code, those specifics are matching up with their real world experience. As I mentioned, we are trying to launch an interactive story map. It's almost completed at this point. We are hoping to go live with this shortly. This example you can see on the screen here is from Seattle, but it will essentially look similar to that. It will provide a map with a pop up if you click your area. That tells you the proposed change and somewhat what the form of that area is proposed to look like. This webpage will also include updates about the middle housing land use code amendment. So we're using it more as a one stop shop for a lot of our housing amendments that we're working on now. So we don't have the public having to go to multiple places to comment on these LUCA's. They can just go to this one webpage and give us comments through this one page. We are planning six community information sessions at this point, two virtual, four in person. One of the virtual sessions is scheduled for next week. We are hoping to hold another one in early January. And then four in-person information sessions in January located, one hopefully located downtown, one in the Crossroads Kelsey Creek area, one in the Factoria Newport Hills area, and then one in Southeast Bellevue. So trying to go to the residents in these impacted areas where they are to hear their input and give them more information on the project as well. We will meet with various neighborhood associations. We, if someone's requested a meeting from us, we are essentially taking it at this point. So anyone that emails me and requests a meeting time, we will certainly accommodate that. And all these areas where we will be rezoning, so those areas that are proposed to be rezoned are those areas that right now are not consistent between the future land use map and the land use code. Those areas, the neighboring properties within a buffer zone will be noticed. They'll get a notice to their house essentially. So they will be well aware that there is a zoning change coming down the line and that will explain to them how to get involved in that process as well. We do stakeholder group engagement as well, which is often through the Bellevue Development Community, which is a group that DSD has stood up and gets, we get great input from them on a quarterly or less than quarterly basis, depending on the meeting schedule. And we will meet with affordable housing advocates. This project obviously has a huge impact on the future of affordable housing in the city of Bellevue. So we want to make sure that we are meeting with them to see what we can do to further affordable housing in the city. As I mentioned, the shopping center developers have been the most engaged at this point. A lot of those properties are ripe for redevelopment with a more mixed use development type at this point in time. And the comprehensive plan is generally supportive of that. So we have seen a lot of interest from them and we have been meeting with them. They've requested meetings with us and we've taken those. So the next steps with this, as I mentioned, phase one has been completed. Phase two is that public input phase as well as the planning commission phase, which is another opportunity for us to gather more public input. That's scheduled from Q4 of this year, essentially starting next week, as I mentioned, to Q2 of 2025. After Q2 of 2025, we move into the planning commission public hearing and the city council meetings. We anticipate that for late spring, early summer of 2025. And as Nick mentioned, this is information only, but we would like your input on the scope changes. Any heartburn you have over any of the changes or any further recommendations you'd like to give us? We are all ears and if you have any questions, we are available to answer that as well. And with that, Mary, I'll hand it back to you.
Okay, thank you. May I, okay, I'm going to start and then I'll have deputy mayor go next. Then council member Newhouse Stokes on Hamilton and Lee. So I'm just going to say there's a lot of good in here. And I'm eager to move forward in here with the planning commission and the community have to say about the possibilities of this and the impact and the positive. I mean, we really do need to get more affordable housing going, especially in downtown because in my opinion, that was a missed opportunity when we upzoned our entire downtown with hardly any requirements for affordable housing or even incentives. So this kind of gives those back a little bit. But I will tell you that even before that, our downtown was created with a strong sensitivity to our neighborhoods. And it does have a wedding cake and for a reason. And I personally don't want to lose that. I don't want to lose the original intention and design of our downtown. And so when you look at putting what you call the highest scale and density on perimeter overlays, to me, that just flies in the face of the intent of our downtown planning, which we spent years on. Even the upzoning of downtown, when I was on the council, we spent years working with the community and thinking about that. So I'm not a fan of changing that up. So I guess my ask would be for the planning commission to consider the perimeter overlays. And also looking at where you have areas that have just one lane each direction, the impact that this ups, up, what do I call it? An upzone? Land use code amendment would have on that. So we decided to exclude Old Bellevue last time because it's just such a small area. And we also excluded areas by view crest. Now, just to put it in context, Pinnacle is where the QFC property is. And there is a piece of property next to the street and Pinnacle between that. And so to apply the LUCA to that strip of property, I think would be very impactful. And again, you just have the one lane each direction. So I'm aware of these areas, but I'm curious about other parts of our city that might be impacted by this land use code amendment. So I'd like the planning commission to consider that. I do think step backs are really important. I always get confused if it's step backs or setbacks.
Step backs.
Step backs, okay. I think those are really important and I see, I feel the difference when I'm downtown and I walk a lot and I can feel that I'm not being towered over by a building that has a step back. So I'm a big fan of that. What percentage are we hoping to achieve of affordable housing with this land use code amendment? I think the temporary one we put in place, we were only getting 5%. And so what are we hoping for? What do we anticipate we would get?
So I can start out with Matthew, if you have anything to add. Part of the work with the Nexus and Proportionality Study is going to help us understand what are the ways that we can maximize affordable housing through that process? We don't have a specific goal at this point. We'll be doing more engagement once we get the results of that Nexus Study to understand, you know, what would be feasible for us to get. But I could assume, or I think it's safe to assume that 5% is probably not, it's not quite enough for what we were thinking in terms of the yield on affordable housing with this upzone.
Yep. And so, yeah, so you may have to give to get. And that underscores even more why I want to look at some of the more sensitive areas so that we can get more affordable housing when we do it. I think your engagement plan so far is really good. And so I'm looking forward to hearing back from the community. And, you know, when we look at these shopping centers, they're also individual and there's tremendous opportunity. I just think it should be a win-win for the community, the existing community and for the community that we're bringing or the people we're adding to the community. So let me just check my notes for a second here and make sure. I think that was all I had to say. Okay, thank you. So deputy mayor.
Deputy Mayor, thank you, Matthew, Nick and Tara for a great presentation. I also see lots of good, like the mayor mentioned. I have one question, I think you may answer that and maybe it's too early. But we don't know how many actual housing production and affordability over time we are going to get by this. It's too early to ask that.
Yeah, I don't think we have a specific projection for number of housing units. It is one of the differences between a mandatory and voluntary program. With a mandatory program, you kind of know exactly how many affordable housing units you're going to get just based on the development. So there's going to be a set percent of that development amount that you're going to get as affordable housing, whether that's 10%, 15%, whatever that is. With a voluntary, that's more fluid, it's going to depend on developers using it. So no projections for you at this point. And it's definitely going to depend on the affordable housing side of things, on what type of program gets adopted in the end as well.
Thank you. Like Mayor, I also want more housing in our city. Absolutely, we need more affordable housing in our city. But I also think we should see the impact that that can do to the character and livability of our existing neighbors. So I think we should be very aware of that. I also believe that we need to, as any time that we have some increase in density, I should check the impact in traffic, the infrastructure needs that these land use code change will bring. Also, other community services. this land use code change will bring. Also, other community services, school capacity, those all need to be investigated, and I'm concerned about those. The other thing that I'm also, I think we should have some strategies, is how to preserve and support existing small businesses in this area that we are going to have these significant changes. My last comment is, I am hearing this phenomena that commercial is kind of, is now cold, or do we have any modeling that at one, what time in future, commercial become hot again? And are we, are we prepared for that? And are we, I don't want to create a pendulum that we just completely forgot about the commercial because it is cold right now, obviously. But at some point in future, like everything is going to be a sine wave, and then we go back again. Are we prepped for that? Do we have enough flexibility? Many cities are doing a lot of flexible zoning that the transfer between residential and commercial is not as, is based on market demands, and is not that much regulation about it. So are we doing anything about that? That's also one of my questions whenever I see the commercial is now cold. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, great comments so far, and agree with pretty much all of it. You know, I think Deputy Mayor got it right in terms of, and I think we share that goals, is that balance. Yes, we want to create as much housing, as much as affordable housing as well, but I think we're always very sensitive to the impacts to current residents and characters of neighborhoods, et cetera, et cetera. Really look forward to getting some feedback from staff, too, on a lot of the emails and the letters we received the last couple of days about the Pinnacle project. In particular, for me, I would like to understand the claim about parties of record and the HOAs and the neighborhoods were never notified of the change increasing the minimum height 40% to 14 stories. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but certainly, maybe there's something we can learn from that. And going forward as we're doing this engagement, speaking of engagement, I love the way you position that. That was fantastic. One of the best descriptions of the engagement that you're going to do, the number of different opportunities that the community is going to have, and the fact that you're saying, here's my number, here's my email, you get in contact with me, and I'll have a meeting. Thank you. That's exactly what we need. So I really appreciate that immensely. As the mayor mentioned, I think, you know, they consider the perimeter overlays, I think is certainly something to look at. Again, the impacts and the areas impacted by, in a similar way, the step backs. The 5,700 number for affordable housing, what percentage of that is 0 to 30 to 0 to 50, let's say?
I'm not remembering off the top of my head.
Okay.
But there was, we had broken down the 5,700 by those AMI levels.
So how are we gonna balance that if it's, let's say, half of it is 0 to 30 or 0 to 50? How are we gonna balance that in terms of incentives or mandatory, knowing that those are, you know, challenging for us in terms of affordable housing? I don't know if we can speak to that, how we're going to balance that, or look to balance that, because that's obviously a much bigger lift.
I think those are gonna be part of the conversations the Planning Commission has. The other component is, as we're working through the Affordable Housing Strategy update, we're gonna be working through what are some of the actions we need to take to achieve that, our overall affordable housing target.
Okay.
And I think just to add to that, when we look at a land use code amendment, we have a very specific definition of affordable housing in the land use code. So we're probably looking at that 80% AMI level. Where the work comes in to bring that number down is looking at some of those overlapping programs that may not be through the land use code, but might be through community development programs, or some of our affordable housing programs. The city can work to buy some of those down, or reserve some of those lower prices, as well as working with our partners at, you know, King County Housing Authority and Arch to provide some of that lower-cost housing that's not necessarily through the land use code, but through these other mechanisms.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much. This is a great update, and I look forward to hearing more, especially as it makes its way through the Planning Commission. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, it, you know, sometimes good work takes time, takes the time it takes, and we're doing that. And I'm glad we're setting this motion two years ago and have made a lot of progress. I think it's been some good things answered, questions of this, and some answers on it. We haven't really talked about the Pinnacle thing, and I think actually that's something we quite not, we don't have a grasp on that, in a sense. But some issues have been brought up, and I'm sure we're gonna work on that. We could talk all night about it, but I assume that we're going to look at that very carefully. The, I say, and I think we have the tools in place to help us guide development in these directions and everything, and how we achieve that shift. I mean, it sounds like, and we're getting good feedback from the council, good feedback from the public, but I'm very impressed by the work you've done and what you're, how you're putting this together. So I think we can, I think we can actually attack the challenges and make them work. I mean, we have to have that attitude. We can't have this attitude, no, we can't do that, no, we can't do that for some reason, because that's the way we did it 10 years ago, or whatever. But we have to have that balance. You know, it's interesting driving around areas in Bellevue. Now, I know, I live in Woodbridge, and Woodbridge doesn't have a lot of, you know, offices or anything in it. It's a neighborhood. But it's not very far away, and there's several roads there where there are 100,000 cars driving every day, and we're down in Factoria. But what I found going around places I hadn't been in, you know, five or 10 years, there are a heck of a lot of multifamily housing going up all over the area, all over the city. A lot downtown, a lot of other places. So we're changing. You can't just have what we had a long time ago. But we can have parts of it, and we can make it there. So I think what we're working towards is how do we balance that, and how do we come in? More people are gonna come here. We're not, we can't just put a sign and say, no more people can come to Bellevue. So people are gonna come to Bellevue. And we, so how are we gonna house them? I mean, that's the big problem. We could go back, when we first came here, it's 80,000, and now what? We have just twice that. And it's gonna go more. So I think this, I hope we all focus, keep it focused on, how do we, how do we make the change in a way that really accomplishes and helps everybody get good life, get a good housing, and work together? Because it's not a us versus them, which it seems like it has in some places. And it's, if we can just get away from the negativity of it and look at what we're doing, and I think you're, the way you've set this up, I'm really impressed with. I think it is, will help us do that, to really understand it. And an example is, you know, the whole thing with Pinnacle has triggered some people who are, I understand, they're looking at that like we don't want.
Councilmember Stokes, I'm just, I'm just gonna say something. Pinnacle is a done deal, okay? It's not even up for conversation or discussion right now.
I know, I know. Okay, all right.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it's just that it's something we're working on. Anyhow, that's, I know there are a lot of details on this, but I think, I think we're on a good path to make this work. And having this conversation, and having people say, well, why aren't we doing this, is good. But I'm very positive that we're going to get there. So I appreciate the work you're doing. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Thinking. Councilmembers on?
Oh, great. My turn. All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. You know, I think this is a really important effort to align our land use code and our zoning so that we're all clear about what we're trying to achieve. And I really like the fact that you're almost ready with the interactive map, and also all of the in-person. And I would actually also recommend making virtual meetings available, because not everybody, even if you're in the neighborhood, if they've got childcare needs and whatnot, people may not be able to attend in person, even if it's in their neighborhood. Because I, you know, we don't provide childcare when we have sessions out in the community. So as broad of outreach as we can do, I think would be really helpful. I like the fact that you are gonna be providing us options for affordable housing, so that we are able to really understand between requirements and incentive, and how these different pieces work together. I also appreciate your discussion about the economic analysis, and really, how do we adjust the dial appropriately so that we are not squatching development? And also that, at the end of the day, the far, and increasing the far is actually what we're giving, that we expect public benefit in return. So adjusting this dial properly means that we're being really good stewards of the city and the very limited resources that we have to help adjust the lever to provide more housing and affordable housing in our community. The couple of questions that I have is, does this also include rentals and homeownership units? So that's one question I have. And then maybe similar to some of my colleagues, I was trying to understand, of the 35,000 households and 5,700 affordable housing units, how many are we expecting in these HOMA areas of the whole? So I'm just trying to get a sense for that, because I think there are some that are pure residential. So these mixed-use ones are a proportion of all the places that are gonna have housing. So if you could help with that. And then lastly, as I'm thinking about this, and really vibrant, well-served neighborhoods is what we're talking about, I would like to better understand whether there's an opportunity for affordable commercial spaces within this mixed use. So I know we're talking about housing, but it seems like if we're talking about incentives, then this may be a, you give me housing that's affordable, or a commercial space, or some combination of. So I'm not sure we would confine it only to housing, because, again, it's about the dial. And then if we do include that in the discussion, I want to better understand how we can maybe bake in some anti-displacement language, so that there may be able to be some phasing of businesses, so that they're not just gone forever. So I guess two or three questions embedded in there. Thank you.
Yeah. I'll address all the ones other than the comp plan question. Tara, I'll leave that to you. So we would plan to address rental and ownership with any affordable housing program. The land use code beyond affordable housing generally doesn't discriminate between those two types. So anything that would apply to rental would also apply to homeownership. We have heard significant input about commercial displacement, and it will be something we'll look at, whether that's providing some sort of incentive to maintain existing retail, or providing some sort of incentive for small business. It's something we will definitely have more conversations with our economic development team on how we can best achieve that within the sort of confines of this land use code amendment.
Okay.
I can, I can address your question about number of units. So when we went through the comp plan process, and we did our EIS, as you may recall, we made certain assumptions of capacity in citywide, essentially. So we can, that's something we can provide you and maybe at a future meeting. We can, we can go through and provide that analysis of what the amount of capacity these mixed-use areas were, we're thinking would generate.
Yeah, I think that would be great. Actually, I had one comment. As you go out, I do think it would be helpful in the neighborhood centers map to, because it looks like all the asterisks are purple. But we know that not all of the shopping centers were zoned the same. So maybe you could use some different colors to differentiate, because I noticed that you, that we did do that in the countywide map of designating the different locations. So I do think it would avoid some confusion if we were able to use some delineator for these different shopping center and village areas. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Considering we just adopted the comp plan update, it makes perfect sense that we would take a look at the scope of HOMA, and see where it needs changed, so that we can accomplish our housing goals that we set forth in the comp plan. Of course, this is critical work. We need to build a lot of housing. We must be focused on housing all around the city. This has really got to be a top priority. Expanding the scope of HOMA is one way that we implement the critical housing policy that's in our comp plan. And I think, too, out of, just out of the agenda memo, it was put perfectly, the proposed scope adjustments ensure that HOMA, that the HOMA initiative remains relevant and impactful, aligning housing and mixed-use development within the city's evolving vision and priorities. I think when we're looking at voluntary versus mandatory, you know, I'm not sure how many housing units we're gonna get with each. I think it's a good thing. We do want to project it. And if there's any way that we can create within the code, or some other way, that we can build it in, the ability to make changes if we don't get the amount of affordable housing we need. So technically, I don't know how to do that, but I know there's a real fear that we go one direction or the other, and things aren't gonna go right. So we're not gonna get the housing we need. Well, I would love to have some flexibility somewhere, so that we could recalibrate if we need to. The engagement plan appears to be very comprehensive. I'm looking forward to participating in it. The six modes of outreach that are planned, I think, are really gonna be necessary. We know that these projects bring about a lot of feedback, and it's a challenge for folks, the impact of these potential changes. And I think we, I'm really glad that you're taking it so seriously, because we need to address those concerns. And two, I'm sure that we will have some additional briefings and study sessions, but I think it's especially important with this project that we do that, so that we can make our final decision in Q3 of next year. And then, too, just, this is kind of a minor point, but it's something I brought up earlier about our neighborhood planning, and just making sure that we're really clear which areas we're planning for. Crossroads isn't always clear. Newport isn't always clear. I noticed in the agenda memo that we refer to Newport Hills. Well, that, that doesn't take into account that really Newport is the entire southwest corner of the city. It's Newport Hills, it's Lake Heights, it's Newport Shores, it's Greenwich Crest. Just want to be really careful with that language, because I want to make sure that everybody feels like they're a part of the process, and they feel naturally engaged. So just keeping those terms straight, I think, is really helpful. But this is all really super-important work, and I think we're off to a good start. And thank you.
Good feedback. Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I compliment you on, you know, making this, say, clear as possible, to figure out what does it mean, you know, for each neighborhood, using downtown IOC as a real model. The challenges, however, I think I mentioned that to you earlier, when you briefed me, it's the community outreach. As you see that, you know, you presented to the public first, Phase One, you already have a plan. You decided, you know, this is how we can implement the council's vision. How many affordable housing units do we need? How many additional affordable housing is necessary, you know, to meet the demand that we're looking at? So this is all good. But when you present this, you know, without the first phase, you don't have the community contact yet. Community outreach is coming in a second phase. So that's why you see the last few days, week, this pretty big outcry from some of the committee members, you know, on the Pinnacle property development. They say, wow, gee, what is it? Because affordable housing, housing in general, it's being, it's very complicated. I believe even today, as we've gone through this for quite a while, many people still don't quite understand what the exact implication is, because every neighbor is different. Every neighborhood characteristic may be different. So they don't, when you apply something to one as a model, as example, as a rule, they're confused, you know, because they see something that doesn't quite fit. And so I would... And so, I would encourage you, as I did before, include them as early as you can. And don't say, we already have this plan, that, you know, that's, we already done it, and we just let you know it. You know, but it's more than that. It's really trying to get the real input. So, that's the process I would encourage you to look at. The second one, I may come back to this a little bit later, which is more important to me, is to talk about mandatory requirement or incentive requirement. You mentioned you're going to provide to the Planning Commission for them to look into it. I don't, I don't know whether that's the appropriate process. I believe that the city council should actually discuss it, whether we believe it should be mandatory or incentivized, before we actually tell the Planning Commission, you know, what's, what do we prefer, or we don't have preference, we want them to help us to decide, or whichever. Because I think some of us have pretty strong feelings about, you know, whether it be mandatory or incentivized. So, that's just put aside. Maybe you can answer that first. Are you already assuming that we say it could be just mandatory?
We make the final decision on it. You know, the Planning Commission does not, so we just get their input before we make any decision on it.
But that's not the message I get. If I'm the Planning Commission, say, oh, Planning Commission, decide for us.
No.
No. I want to be clear. Before even, as the Planning Commission to look at which one, I think the council needs to say which one.
And Councilmember Lee, the policy direction that we're following provides that we explore kind of the different approaches to getting affordable housing, and so, that's a similar process that we're following with Wilburton, that's responding to adopted policy that says, look at these options, and have kind of the Planning Commission study those more closely, so that you all can have an informed discussion about it when it comes back to you, as the Mayor was noting.
It includes the question of whether it's mandatory or incentivized?
It does include the flexibility to look at both of those options.
Well, I think that's where I differ. I think they need to have a clear direction. Council provides directions.
Oh, jeez. Okay, what else?
Okay, so, so please, I want to have a clarification on that, okay? Second, I think in terms of community engagement, I think that's important, because I appreciate our comp plan, you know, it's very well done, excellent email, everything. I think the council knows what we want, but many people still are not quite sure. When you use the wrong word, trigger the wrong reaction because of the neighborhood differences, you know, it's confusing. You know, what's affordable? What's middle? We talk about middle housing, you know, lots of people talk about middle housing. Builders, builders, developers. What is it? Now, you used the word middle scale. What is it? What does it mean by middle housing versus middle scale? What, is something to do with intensity, something with affordability? I don't know. Many people don't know that, so they are confused. So, I think I believe it's important to communicate, to reach out to them, let everybody understand what we're talking about, and educate them, then we can get their input, okay? So that we're on the same page. Otherwise, we're getting, whether they like it, or they don't like it, we don't even know what they're liking, they're not liking. I don't.
Oh.
All right? Because I'm going to be asking you, what do they like, what don't they like?
Councilmember Lee.
So, let's figure that out.
Come on.
And I think it's a great process. You need to have them engaged, talk about it, and then, you know, you can make a proposal, but don't make it like it's already a done deal. You guys just have to respond or not respond. Make them feel that they are valued, they have opportunity to input, and whatever combo with this final proposal does include their input. Whether they'll agree or don't agree, that's another matter, but we need to really understand what they are asking and concerned. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so, did you get enough direction and input to consider and pass on?
Yes, appreciate all of your input. Thank you so much.
Okay, good. Thank you. Well, I can't believe I'm saying this, but we are not going to see you until January 7th of the new year 2025, so wishing you all very happy holidays, and stay warm and safe, and we will see you next month.